Session, we will move into executive session at six oh two. And Dr. Ryan, you want to turn it to you or Paula?
Yes, so Kyle, we're in, we're in closed session. Yes, sir.
At this point, at seven sixteen, we are back in open session and we'll move to regular session. And at this time, the Grapevine Colleyville Independent School District Board of Trustees and Central Administration will pause for a moment of silence to reflect on the continued successes of our district, the safety and well-being of our students, our dedicated teachers and staff, and our supportive community. Thank y'all very much. Is Louis on? Did we lose him?
I'm here, I can hear you just fine and see y'all.
Okay, Louis, I'm so sorry. I thought we lost, I want to make sure you're with us.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're excited, we will have the U.S. and the Texas pledges. And tonight, we are honored to have students from Glen Hope Elementary join us to lead the pledges. They will proudly represent their school by leading the U.S. pledge, followed by the Texas pledge, and then share thoughts on how they are progressing towards the portrait of a graduate. So, leading us, leading the pledge, the fifth grader Ella, do we have Ella with us? Ella Bedell? And the Texas pledge is Marvell Scott. There's Ella. Ella, we are waiting for your... We're waiting for Marvell. Just once, he's on, okay. So Ella, we'll, okay, we will stand up Ella.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have Marvell that can lead us with the Texas pledge?
Yes.
You ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and individual.
Great job, both of you, thank you so much. After this, we are going to introduce a video presentation that Glen Hope Elementary has prepared. Ella, can you get it, get it started whenever you're ready, hon? Do you not know anything, I'm looking at your face? Do you not know what I'm talking about?
A video or...
Dr. Griffin, can you help us out?
Yes, Marvell actually going to introduce the video since she was our last speaker.
Okay.
Your ready roll.
Okay. Thank you for allowing Glen Hope Elementary to lead this evening. Please watch as we share our experiences using the GCI SD portrait of a graduate skill.
Hello, my name is Grayson Powers. I'm in the fifth grade at Glen Hope Elementary. I'm going to talk about the importance of being able to solve problems. My fourth grade math teacher said that I wasn't being challenged enough in fourth grade math. So she told my parents I needed to take a telescoping test. At the very beginning, it was hard to learn sixth grade math because we were remote and my parents were working. Sometimes in sixth grade math, you can't get it. Like in previous years, so I have to work after school and then it just clicks. When you're telescoping, you have to do a lot more work and sometimes you have to be able to look things up on your own or go onto text.
My name is Zeke Camilla and I'm...
Hello, my name is Grayson Powers. I'm in the fifth grade at Glen Hope Elementary. I'm going to talk about the importance of being able to solve problems. My fourth grade math teacher said that I wasn't being challenged enough in fourth grade math. So she told my parents I needed to take a telescoping test. At the very beginning, it was hard to learn sixth grade math because we were remote and my parents were working. Sometimes in sixth grade math, you can't get it. Like in previous years... Years, so I have to work after school and it just clicks. When you're telescoping, you have to do a lot more work and sometimes you have to be able to look things up on your own or go onto text.
My name is Zeke Camilla and I'm in the fifth grade at Glen Hope Elementary. This week, we were working on division, I mean, nobody likes division. I got really frustrated. In the past, when I got frustrated, I would get really angry, but this time I didn't and I just asked Ms. Derek for help. After she worked with another student, I still didn't get it. So I had to come back later that day and then it just clicked. And now, and now it's simple. Good job to... One of the things I'd like smaller goals is to get straight A's. Like get straight A's for the whole year from fifth grade to like ninth grade if I can do it up till like the last grade, that would be great. To meet that goal, I have to be on time to class, I have to behave, I have to pay attention. And yeah, so that's what I do and some people call that a self-regulated learner.
My name is McKenna Purple and I'm a fifth grader at Glen Hope Elementary. And I'm going to share why I think it's important to be collaborative. I think it's important to be kind to others, especially in times of crisis. It makes me feel like I've done something. I know it's hard when you are new and you don't know. So, we have a new student in our classroom and I noticed she looked for you. Whatever she wanted to find out from us, I couldn't help but ask her if she could have a...
Hi, I'm Jack, I'm Greg. And we're talking about global citizenship. One way that we are showing global citizenship, giving back to our school, is we are doing our school choir show because the music teacher, Ms. McCully, she has a lot on her hands with COVID and remote learning. And so, we just thought that would be a nice thing to do. And in our classroom, we have a thing called a live period where people in our classroom can submit books that say, yeah, written. And everyone else in the classroom can read it. I do shows, like giving back my committee by giving them fun things to do. And I do it and that I show my friends.
My name is Amelia Phoenix and I'm in the fifth grade. I'm an effective communicator because I have a good record about like to talk a lot that has helped me find who likes to be still. First of all, I like to organize my thoughts on papers, make sure I put everything in I want to say in order to get my message properly. Then I speak loudly, clearly, and enunciate. It is also important to look people in the eye and speak confidently. You know, communicating with a friend or a visitor is important to stop quacking and listen to their opinions and ask for feedback. In 2018, I spoke to the Texas Senate of Education Committee and shared my thoughts about repealing the GT allotment. At the time, it went really well, they told me they were reinstated and it ended up getting cut again. So I planned to go back again in 2021 because one of the keys to being a good student to do is to pick things you have passion about. And it's important to speak from your heart. I believe GTIS helped me grow in this area by coaching and giving me the opportunity to express my personality.
Hello, my name is Amelia Phoenix and I'm in the third grade at Glen Hope Elementary in Grapevine, Mississippi. I pose house bills, they, and the repeal of the GT allotment. Lots of people think that being GT just means that you're smart, but it really means that we're clever. It means that we can think with depth and complexity. So, yeah, for some of us, that means we can learn some things faster and easier than other kids. There are also downsides. Many GT kids also have oversight abilities, which is going to make things easier every night and feeling like things have to be perfect. Just because we're here, we need to listen up to our debate, just because we have such broad differences and we don't say funding also. My district is fortunate enough to have a strong GT program. So I'm not here to fight for me and my friends or my family and my district, but to fight for other districts and kids who don't have a voice. I want all districts to have a GT program like mine, a quality program. This is why I'm asking you to repeal the GT allotment. This is important to me. And I can come back in two years and ask again, and two years after that, and on and on, and to one day, I hope to be the George.
Dr. Griffin, I take it that's the end of the video? Or the... It is the video, thank you guys. Thank you, Dr. Griffin. Dr. Griffin is our Glen Hope Elementary Principal. And the students that were able to join us tonight, that we really appreciate you taking, giving your time and leading us in our pledges, was Ella, I don't know if Ella's still with us? I'm not sure either. Ella Bedell and Marvell Scott. Ella Bedell? Yes. Thank you, thank you both very much, you did a great job. And we look forward to being able to see you in person soon. Dr. Griffin, is there anyone else on that you're aware of that you'd like to recognize tonight? No, I don't think anybody else is on except the Bedells, Ella's parents are probably on, and Marvell's mom, Rashana Williams is also on. Wonderful, thank you both. I thank all of you, thank y'all. But this time... I thought you would enjoy... I'm sorry? I just thought you would enjoy hearing Amelia's testimony in front of the state, the Senate Education Committee. Yes. Yes, we, yes, we did, we were all clapping. Great job. Thank you, Dr. Griffin. Thanks for having us. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Ryan for the introduction of our recognitions for this evening. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, thank you very much. The first thing that we have is our monthly LEAD 2.0 highlight. As we continue to use our strategic plan, LEAD 2.0 to guide our work, we're always bringing a highlight each month to a different aspect of the district in this portion of the meeting to show our trustees and the community how the four LEAD 2.0 goals are impacting our students in this month. The highlight is the positive impact that our dyslexia services team is having on the district. And so, I'll turn this quickly over to Dr. Schnouts.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Ryan. So as you all know, October is Dyslexia Awareness Month. So we wanted to take this opportunity to give the board a glimpse into how we're serving our students during this challenging time through dyslexia intervention. In addition, we will also highlight the progress that we made as a district and the growth of our dyslexia support from identification to professional learning. Amy, the floor is yours.
Dr. Ryan and Dr. Schnouts and trustees. So as Dr. Schnouts said, October is Dyslexia Awareness Month. And so, we are here to share some information on how we are working towards LEAD 2.0 goal one of actively identifying and removing barriers. And so, I have a few people that are going to be joining us remotely as we go through this presentation. And so, dyslexia in 2020, 2021. This summer, we were excited to offer three weeks of extended dyslexia learning. In the past, that had been part of our enrichment program and parents could have their students attend that. We had a third of our students that joined us during the summer. And so, we were excited to be able to extend that learning for three additional weeks. In the spring, we had our lessons videotaped. Moving into the fall, we, again, were excited to move into lessons that started remotely as we were all remote. And then, as we moved into the in-person and also remote lessons. Due to COVID, we got to the point where students were unable to share materials like we had done in the past. And so, we quickly ordered materials for each of our students that go with our dyslexia intervention. And then, the interventionists either became part of the drive-throughs that campuses were holding, and then some went and delivered the materials right to the student's house so that the students had everything they needed to get the year started. And the little picture over there on the left-hand side, we borrowed a room in the P-deck and socially distanced, put together materials for students, anywhere from pencils, plastic letters, movable materials to the copies of the paper that they would need at home. Another exciting part that we have just jumped into is Take Flight is one of our dyslexia interventions. And that comes from Scottish Rite in Dallas. And they have put into the works interactive materials. So as the district moved to interactive boards in classrooms, we quickly saw that this was a need because the materials we typically would use on a dry erase board, we needed to get in a digital version. And so, thank you to Kyle and his team, we got those up and running. Teachers can manipulate those on the board, kids can manipulate those on the board. So it's great for our in-person students, but also our remote learners. Last year, we sadly said goodbye to four interventionists on our team. They retired, they had been with us for years, we wished them well. But we excitedly brought on four new members to our team. Four of our members on the intervention team are attending training at Scottish Rite for Take Flight. That is a two-year, very intensive program. And so, we're excited to be able to continue that learning within the team. And then, the state always, every summer, offers a dyslexia conference. And so, we were able to remotely attend that as a team. The next slide shows you some of the exciting things going on. The picture on the left shows those interactive boards and how students and teachers can write on those. And in dyslexia world, we do a lot of coding of letters and words. The picture on the top right are the Take Flight materials. Matter of fact, I wish you could jump in our Google Chat thread that we had going on today. The interventionists were sharing their excitement back and forth, that, you know, magnets are no longer slipping down the boards, all of their materials are right there in one. And giddy with excitement just doesn't even begin to explain it. And what I heard from the interventionists is the kids seem so much more engaged too. You take it from like a dry erase board to an interactive board and it's like a whole new world for them. So, exciting part. And then, at the bottom right, you can see another thing that we use with our kids prior to starting in Take Flight or MTA, just working on letters. And so, some more exciting things that have gone on this year, professional development for staff. So, I've been in GCISD, this is year twenty-three. I've been in some capacity on the intervention team for fourteen-plus years now. And so, I've seen dyslexia from the foundation up to now. And so, flex, we have professional development for teachers there. In August, there was Grade-Alike Day and Roll-Alike Day where we talked about characteristics of dyslexia and accommodations at that time. And the focus of accommodations is continuing and ongoing. We continue to develop our program and we work with both Special Ed and our 504 district coordinator to help teachers understand accommodations, not only in person, but also that remote environment. And we got in contact with the technology group too. On that picture on that left-hand side, they send out a weekly in-tech update. And so, you can see they have their digital accommodations that they shared, again, with all GCISD teachers. Continued work with the Read Parent Group, communication with classroom teachers in transition as students complete dyslexia intervention. So, we don't want these students to think that it's this magical room that they go to and then they go back to their classroom, but how did I carry that learning back into the classroom? And how do we help teachers understand what they are learning and take that back into the classroom as well? Continued learning for literacy interventionists, monitoring the progress of students. And one thing that's been exciting is as dyslexia lead, you're sort of on an island by yourself. I don't do well on an island, I have to find friends. And so, found lots of local dyslexia leads, whether it's Richardson, Rockwall, Northwest, Carroll, or HEB. And we meet about four times a year or whenever there is a need and just share ideas and thoughts and how to get better together. So, one thing we spend a lot of time in is working with our parents. In the past, it's been those great pictures on the left where it's face-to-face with parents. This year, it has been in a remote environment. And so, we offered a parent information session on one of our interventionist interventions called multi-sensory teaching approach. We offered another one on Take Flight and had quite a few parents attend those, actually more than we've had in person. And we had our question and answer chat up and had some great conversation back and forth with parents. So, we talked through the components. And then, last week, we had a digital accommodation session where parents could see accommodations available, how to add them to the computer, and also how those are facilitated. So, one thing we have been unable to do is the dyslexia simulation. And that is everyone's favorite, whether it's classroom teachers or parents. We feel like it would be a disservice to do it in a remote environment. And so, we look forward to the day we can get back together face-to-face to put that into action. This slide talks about dyslexia over the years in GCISD. It's been a superintendent's goal for several years. We continue to raise our number of students identified with dyslexia. And just as a reminder, once a student is identified, that identification stays with them all the way through when they graduate GCISD. And so, there's a number of students identified and also a number of students that are in, currently in services. And then, I noted at the bottom, we're lucky, our state dyslexia lead is actually in Dallas. And so, we've got close contact with her and check-in on state numbers. And the state numbers for the 2019-2020 school year was 4.1%. And you can see as a district, we were at 5%. And so, now I'm going to turn it over. We've got two of our interventionists joining us remotely. We have Jennifer Coffey and also Cindy Kunkel. And so, I'm going to let them share a little bit about how dyslexia has looked in this new environment that we're working in.
My name is Cindy Kunkel. And we have had an interesting, you write on doing dyslexia. We did summer school for three weeks and I was lucky that all but one of my elementary students actually participated in summer school. So, we could just continue on their learning like we had done before. And it also made us a shorter time before we got back in August and we could still continue with developing those routines of what it would look like online. And so, then in August, we got to actually see each other as we handed out supplies to all the students and all the students were excited to see all their teachers and hand them their supplies so that they would have everything they needed when they first got back. One thing about these meetings, they were socially distanced, but it kind of helped build our bond with our parents also, not just our kids. And our parents, what was fabulous about them having, them being supportive of their parents, of their kiddos at home, was our parents actually got to watch some of our lessons. And that showed them how hard our kids are working to learn how to decode words and how to spell words. And it also taught your parent, taught the parent how to support their children better, which was, to me, a definite benefit, you know, since we couldn't do the simulations. We also had that opportunity during our monitoring time where we go one-to-one, that the parents could touch base with the interventionist. And they could ask questions or, you know, ask advice or, you know, give us information if we're having trouble of how to deal with accommodations in the classroom so that we could contact the classroom teacher or give them advice on how to help them at home. A couple other things, we've had the opportunity through, through our dyslexia groups to connect our remote students with our synchronous learners, our in-person learners. Whereas, at the high school, I've had the opportunity to build a support group with a sophomore and three freshmen so that they can talk about what is it like, you know, to be in high school? So, it kind of helped out. And then, my celebration was I actually got to write a college recommendation letter for one of my kiddos for this, for next year, that he's a senior this year. So, I thought that was pretty neat that we had that relationship that we have built and through our, through the dyslexia program. So, I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer Coffey.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Coffey. I am serving Grapevine Middle School right now and Cannon Elementary. And Cindy just put that so beautifully and I'd like to kind of piggyback off of what she said. I really think that this opportunity has afforded us a way to sort of reimagine the old three Rs, right? So, we had reading, writing, arithmetic. And now, I feel like we have reinvention, relationships, and readiness. And so, like Cindy talked about, the relationships that we've made with our parents have been so beneficial because not only do we have now a window into our kids' worlds in their homes, the parents have a window into our world. And there have been, you know, many classes where the parents have hung out afterwards and, you know, they said, "Well, can you explain this to me again and what, how does this go?" Because they truly want to understand and to help their child. So, that relationship piece has been huge. And I know I have stronger relationships now than I ever did before. Reinvention is another one of the new Rs. So, our program is designed to be taught explicitly with constant student-teacher feedback. And to do that in a remote environment with, you know, some kids at home, some kids in person has been a challenge. But we have done lots of going back to the drawing board, you know? And the great thing is that we've all leaned on each other and really become stronger as a team as we've collaborated to find new solutions. One thing that I feel has been really strengthened on the team is digital tools. One thing that I feel has been really strengthened on the team is digital tools. So not only the Take Flight tools that some of our interventionists are getting to use, but just digital charts and ways to give kids resources so that they can help themselves, which is always our goal. I had a student the other day say, "You know, these charts really help." And I said, "Yes, that's great. That's the idea." We really want them to take ownership of their learning. And that brings me to the last R, which is readiness. So when we look at a portrait of a graduate and getting our 21st century learners ready, I feel like we have pushed the fast-forward button on the skill of readiness. These kids are ready for college. You know, not only do we always push self-advocacy in the world of dyslexia, this has really allowed kids to do it in all facets of their lives. They know how to email their teachers, they know how to ask specific questions about what they need and how they can get help. They know how to buckle down and get their work done so that they can move on to a preferred activity, which is a skill we all love to use. And so, you know, these kids now are advocates for themselves and I feel so much better prepared for the future. So with all of the challenges this whole experience has brought us, I feel like there is a lot, there are a lot of positives to look at. And so we've been really happy to be a part of it.
Okay, and then we've got one more special visitor. So we have Audrey Prather and we also have Journey with us. So a little bit about Journey and then I'll let her share the rest. She is currently a student at Cross Timber's Middle School in our GT independent study. She completed dyslexia intervention last year. And right before the pandemic, I walked into the classroom of Ms. Prather and there was Journey practicing at the board. And I said, "Tell me a little bit about what you're doing." Well, she was in Aspire at Glen Hope. And she wanted to present to her peers what dyslexia is, why she leaves the classroom on a daily basis, and wanted to teach them a little bit about what she does while she's there. So Journey, are you with us? Journey, can you hear me? Give me a thumbs up if you can hear me. We're trying to see if we can get your audio to work. Do you want to try talking, Journey? Okay, Ms. Prather, do you want to tell us a little bit of Journey's background and just what the two of y'all worked on together last year?
Sure. Hello, everybody. My name is Audrey Prather. I'm a literacy interventionist here in the district. I've been a dyslexia teacher for about seven years now, four of which have been in Grapevine-Collville. And I just have to introduce Journey as one of the students that I'm most proud of for her skills in self-advocating and really being confident in speaking to her dyslexia. She's just impressed me the whole time I've known her. She's a great kid. So what happened was last year, Journey was in fifth grade with me at Glen Hope and she was graduating her dyslexia program. So in February, we exited and had a little celebration from finishing her program and then decided that she wanted to present to her class kind of what she does with me every day, what dyslexia is, also some common misconceptions that other students might have about dyslexia. So we decided to kind of set one day of the week aside so she could work on her project and practice and give feedback and all sorts of great things happening. And then everything kind of flipped upside down with COVID. And unfortunately, we never got to present that project. So I was kind of upset and sad for Journey, being her fifth-grade year. We really wanted to celebrate her graduating this program, but just unfortunately, it couldn't happen with circumstances. So come this next current school year, Journey is now in sixth grade at CTMS. And Journey actually was the one that contacted me about wanting to present to her class still. And I was just completely thrilled and so on board and got Amy connected as well so we could all kind of work on this together. And Journey is on her way to completing her project to present to her class this year for her independent study. So we're all just so proud of Journey for continuing to want to do this despite COVID and everything that it could prevent her from doing. So she's a great candidate to speak tonight and kind of share her experience. And I'm really excited to hear what she has to share.
Journey, you want to try talking now? Okay, well, Journey is going to be presenting to her class in December. And so Journey, we're going to be there to capture you presenting to your classroom, both in video and photos so that we can bring it back to the members here and we can celebrate all the work that you've done. As Ms. Prather said, I got connected back to Journey and met with her at Cross Timber. She had heard about the dyslexia simulation and that's something we require of all of our teachers and asked me, you know, what component could she use with the kids that are in her GT independent study class? So I brought the five different components. And, you know, sometimes kids think on a different level than teachers do because we've got so much going on. And she's like, "Well, I've got to be careful because I'm going to have remote and in-person kids. So which one's going to work the best?" And I'm like, "Of course. Yep, we need to think through that." I'm glad you thought about that. So Journey's got one component that she's going to utilize with her students and she's been doing lots of research. So Journey, we're excited to celebrate you and can't wait. I've got it on my calendar that I'm going to be there in December to watch you. So thank you.
Before we leave Journey, maybe after she's done her presentation, we can invite her back and have her share her presentation with us.
That would be amazing.
Good.
Because she is a very outspoken and very well-spoken kiddo.
I look forward to hearing that.
So Journey, we'll come up with Plan B, okay? So as you can see, lots of things going on in dyslexia world in GCISD. We have definitely made lots of progress, both in intervention and accommodations and definitely continue to work towards greater improvements moving forward. Any questions?
Sorry, do we have any questions?
I have a question. Approximately how many of our dyslexic students are still opting for remote versus in-person instruction?
Good question. So I counted that last week and we have 45 of our 379 that are continuing to stay remote.
Any other questions? Becky?
It's not so much a question but a comment. And I was glad to hear this from both Ms. Coffey and Ms. Kunkel. So let me make sure I'm hearing you all correctly. So you're actually seeing more parent engagement and more parent understanding of what the services that their students are getting because of the digital environment? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, especially in the springtime when parents were kind of sitting more side-by-side with kids, trying to work through all the technology and figure it out. They really just kind of kept that listening ear and were so interested in what was going on and wanting to learn it themselves. And so that has been an unexpected benefit.
Is this something that y'all then think might continue to go forward in some form or fashion, at least being able to harness some of the benefits of the virtual environment? My guess would be particularly for some parents, maybe who don't always have the flexibility to come up to campus to observe something, whether that's because they're employed or maybe they've got other kids at home that they can't haul everybody up to school and see what's going on. Are there some scenarios in which y'all can foresee some types of hybridization of this going forward?
I think that's a good question that we might not have the answer for yet, but definitely, you know, something to look into. I know that our experience has been even through the parent presentations, when you have more parents attend remotely than in person, that that is definitely something that can continue. In that presentation, we take the parents through the different parts of a lesson.
Yeah, just hearing that y'all were able to reach more parents. I mean, whatever method that is, when we're able to draw more parents in, that's a tremendous plus. So thank you. And thank you both, thank you all three and Journey, too, for, you know, persevering through this and finding the silver linings in this and the ways to optimize the situation that we're in and still make things happen for your students. Thank you.
We call those pandemic positives. So we celebrate them when they come.
Do we have, Jorge?
The first one is, have you decided on using Take Flight versus MTA on a student?
So all of our interventionists are trained in MTA. And then we have additional folks that are trained in Take Flight. With it being a two-year program, we've got one group, four that are going through this year. And we'll look at additional teachers going forward in the future. MTA has mastery checks in it and Take Flight has more manipulatives that are going to use additional working memory. And so to the best that we can with the personnel we have available, we'll look at, you know, which intervention might fit which student best. And if one intervention isn't working for a student, then we look at the possibility of changing them into another intervention.
Have you, if you decide to go with MTA and a parent wants to Take Flight, how do you fix that?
That is an R and a 504 decision. So it's a decision that comes up with the committee. The State Dyslexia Handbook doesn't say that it has to be a specified intervention. We've got some local districts that do like a little bit of blending of all of it and call it language sciences. You know, whether that's the best practice or not, I'm not sure. But there are components in the State Dyslexia Handbook that lay out the different parts of a dyslexia intervention. And both of those hit all of the areas.
So, I mean, we have been doing this for a long time. So do we have any results or, you know, stats that say Take Flight is 80% effective versus MTA being 90% effective? And will you look at that to decide, or help us make those decisions?
Because each kid comes in with additional, because we've got some kids that are identified through special ed that have additional disabilities in addition to the dyslexia. And so we have reports out of Scottish Rite that we'll look to for Take Flight. And then the MTA folks have NORMs reports where they'll use a NORM group that you're comparing kids that have the same deficits from starting and what their endpoint is.
Again, my last question is, I mean, we were at 44 kids in 2008. That was like a long, long time ago. Now we're 754. Do you feel that we have everybody that we need to look at? Or you think that we still have kids there that we, for whatever reason, we are missing?
Well, considering we're constantly and continuously testing, you know, we won't, the testing doesn't stop. If kids come up, we have kids that move in, we have kids that move out. And so we're continuously looking at kids. I can tell you that the foundations that we've added into K through 2 is phonics-based. So it's, you know, pre-dyslexia intervention, so to speak, because they talk about coding words there. And so knowing that we have that curriculum, it's really helping us look if a kiddo has gone through foundations and they're still showing, you know, deficits, then that is a big red flag and then we move them forward with testing.
I mean, this is great. I mean, this are great numbers, great service for the community. I am very proud of the work that you guys have done and definitely the support from the school where we're continuing to keep this in the forefront for us. I think that's made a huge difference. So I'm very happy with your presentation and with the results, definitely. And a lot of the feedback is very positive. So thank you.
Thank you. Ladies, we'll share that with the team.
Two years ago, we had 319 kids in intervention with 26 interventionists. And now we've got 60 more kids, but two fewer interventionists. Can you explain to me how we're able to provide that full coverage still?
Yeah. So, and the literacy interventionists, they serve multiple roles. So if you notice, they're not called just dyslexia teachers because dyslexia is their first thing they'll do, will make sure all of the students are covered. They also provide K2 early literacy intervention for our kiddos that are showing deficits based on our universal screener to try to fill in that early intervention piece. We, from 18, 19 to 1920, we repositioned, repurposed the position. And then this year, we had one of our interventionists due to COVID resign, who was a bilingual interventionist. And after the school year starts, like a bilingual teacher is like a needle in a haystack for a bilingual literacy interventionist, whatever the next level of that is. And so we continue to look for either someone that fits our district needs and characteristics, either in the bilingual or the English area.
But we are able to keep up with the students' needs right now?
Yes, we are keeping up with the students.
And we're looking to hire one more person?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions tonight? Thank you so much for giving us your time tonight.
Thank you, Amy. And I will just say also thank you to Jennifer and Cindy and Audrey and all of our interventionists and the people that are doing such good work. Amy, your leadership has made such a big difference. To go, the growth in the program that we've had is just remarkable. So many students are learning the skills that are going to really change their lives forever for the positive. And so we just want to say thank you to you and your team for the incredibly important work that you're doing. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I got to go through Scottish Rite and then grew up in the district and so you guys trained me as well. Thank you.
So our first recognition, we'll move to the recognitions portion. The first recognition is of our National Merit Commended Students. We'd like to recognize 34 GCISD seniors who've earned the National Merit Commended designation. Selection for this prestigious honor is based on the student scores on the PSAT, National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. With this achievement, some of these students will be eligible for special scholarships sponsored by the corporations and businesses. And GCISD has now had 189 students earn National Merit Commended status in the last five years. That's in addition to the 104 students that have earned National Merit semifinalist honors over that time period. All these students are part of an elite group representing fewer than 1% of US high school seniors who showed exceptional academic ability and potential for success in rigorous college studies. I know a lot of the 34 students are joining us tonight. And if you are still out there with us, we want to say thank you for hanging in there with us and we certainly want to introduce you. As I call their name, Kyle Berger is going to let us know if they're joining us. Seniors, if I do call your name, and I'll try to call them in alphabetical order by your last name, please make sure you unmute your microphone and let us know what school you attend and also what your plans are after graduation. So, joining us tonight, first of all, we will see, we've got a maybe right here. So Esha Akara is not with us tonight. Kyle's saying no. What about Emma Parker-Adkins?
Hi, I'm here.
Emma?
I go to Collville Heritage High School and my plans after college are to go to Stevens Institute of Technology in Hoboken, New Jersey.
All right. Thank you for getting us started on the right track there, Emma. Next, we have Jasmine Ashley. Jasmine can't join us tonight. We've got Aman Umanbubu. Not here, okay? Samart Bhuhat? There we go.
Hi, I'm here.
Hi, I'm here. Uh, I go to Colleyville Heritage High School, and after, uh, I graduate, I plan on majoring in either computer science or biomedical engineering. At which college, I'm not sure of as of now.
All right. Thank you, Sumart, for joining us. Congratulations to you. Uh, Jonathan Chekalia is, uh, can't be with us this evening. What about, uh, Mina Chow?
Sir?
Uh, hello, I'm here.
Hi, Nina.
I go to Great Burn, sorry, I go to Great Burn High School. And after graduation, I'm not sure what college I want to go to yet, but I plan to major in history and become a historian.
There you go. Congratulations, Mina. Thank you for joining us tonight. Katherine Clark is next. Who's Katherine? Hi, Katherine.
Hi. So, I go to Colleyville Heritage High School. I plan on either majoring in biochemistry or biomedical sciences in hopes of being an oncologist later in life. And as of right now, I've got no clue where I'm gonna go to college.
All right. Well, thanks for your honesty, Katherine. There we go, and good luck to you. I know that you've got some big decisions on your way. Next, we've got Natalie Engel.
She was not with us tonight.
Natalie, uh, can't join us tonight. So, Aslan Gaddis?
Aslan is not with us.
Okay, congratulations to Aslan. Next, uh, we've got Olivia Galloway.
No Olivia Galloway tonight.
Okay, congratulations to Olivia. What about Alana Gone?
No, Alana is not with us.
Okay, congratulations to Alana. Uh, I know that, uh, Sarah Hali, can't join us, uh, can't join us tonight, but congratulations to Sarah. And then Jenna Hancock.
Jenna's with us.
All right, Jenna.
Hi, I go to Colleyville Heritage, and I want to study music education at BYU.
Awesome. Congratulations, Jenna. Thanks for joining us. Next, we've got Moira Hilton.
Hi, I'm Moira Hilton. I attend Great Burn High School, and I am planning to attend a college along the East Coast, majoring in applied mathematics.
All right, congratulations, and thank you for joining us this evening. Uh, next, we have Gabriella Sue.
Hi, um, I go to Colleyville Heritage High School, and, um, I've applied to a couple of colleges, but I don't know which one I'm gonna go to yet, but I do wanna major in film production.
Awesome. Congratulations, Gabriella. Thanks for joining us. Next, we have Dusty Hogenson. All right, Dusty, you're on.
Oh, whoops. Wasn't unmuted. Okay, good evening. Um, I go to Collegiate Academy, and I was thinking about becoming a medical physicist, but I don't know which college I'm going to yet.
All right. Congratulations, Dusty, and thank you for joining us. Uh, next, we have Rick, uh, Ritvik Kamen.
Hi, I'm Ritvik Kamen. I'm thinking of majoring in either international relations or psychology. I go to Great Burn High School, and I'm planning on deciding where I'm going once I receive my acceptance letters from the universities that I apply to.
Okay, thank you for joining us tonight, Ritvik, and congratulations. Uh, next, we have Angela Miao.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Angela. Um, I'm from Colleyville Heritage. Um, I don't know which college I'm gonna go to, but after graduation, I plan to major in business management and minor in arts administration in hopes of working in the arts administration field.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Angela, for joining us, and congratulations to you. Next, we've got Nicole Obang.
Um, hi, um, I'm, I attend Colleyville Heritage High School. Um, I'm not sure where I'm going to college yet, but I plan to either major in nutrition or psychology to eventually get to med school and become a pediatrician.
All right. Love those goals, Nicole. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. Next, we have William Park. I don't believe William can join us tonight. We've got Kush Patel.
Doesn't look like Kush could join us.
Okay, congratulations to Kush. Uh, next, uh, on the list, we have Emily Quill. I don't believe Emily can join us, but congratulations to Emily. Next, we've got Avery Robertson.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, so, I plan on going to nursing school, and I'm still waiting to do a couple of college visits before I decide where I go.
Okay, thank you very much, Avery. Thank you for joining us, and congratulations to you. Next, we've got Jonathan Shu.
Hello, I'm Jonathan. I attend Colleyville Heritage High School, and I plan to become a neuroscience major, uh, and I'm undecided on which college.
All right. Congratulations, Jonathan. Thank you for joining us. Next, we have Faith Sewell.
Faith isn't with us tonight.
Okay, congratulations to Faith. Uh, Brayden Stevenson.
It doesn't look like Brayden's with us.
Okay. Uh, what about Jay Opayaya?
Jay is not with us tonight.
Okay. Uh, what about Pranav Virat?
Uh, hello, I go to Colleyville Heritage High School. I am still applying to colleges, so I don't know exactly which one I will end up going to, but I plan on majoring in bioengineering or biomedical engineering.
All right. Congratulations, Pranav. Uh, next, we have Aliyan Vedani.
Aliyan's not with us tonight.
Okay, congratulations to Aliyan. Next, we have Ian Boland.
Ian is not with us tonight.
Okay. Uh, what about Jordan Wallace? Congratulations to Jordan. All right.
Hi, I'm Jordan. I go to Colleyville Heritage High School, and I don't know where I'm going to college yet, but I plan to major in chemistry on the pre-vet track.
There we go. Congratulations, Jordan. Thank you for joining us tonight. Next, we have Matthew Watry. There we go.
Hi, I'm.
Hi, Matthew.
I go to Colleyville Heritage High School, and I'm, I plan on going to college in state, but I'm not sure what in, um, mathematics or applied mathematics.
Okay, thank you for joining us, Matthew. Congratulations to you. And, uh, last but certainly not least, we've got Ashley Ju.
Ashley isn't with us tonight.
And congratulations to Ashley and all of our students. I'm sorry that it's taken us so long to get, uh, get to this point. Thank you for those of you who, uh, hung in there with us for a while. It's very important for us to hear about what you wanna study and where you might wanna go to college. We also wanna thank Great Vine High School Principal Alex Fingers and Colleyville Heritage High School Principal Dr. James Whitfield, um, uh, for their leadership. And I, Bobby Canoots from the Collegiate Academy was in there as well. Uh, congratulations again to all of our National Merit Commended Students, and thank you again for joining us tonight. Our next recognition is for Red Ribbon Week. GCISD students and staff are joining others across the nation for the annual Red Ribbon Week celebration. The purpose of this week-long celebration is to promote family and individual responsibility for living healthy, drug-free lifestyles. And to show our support for this initiative, we have an official proclamation to, to share. And so, we'll ask Board Secretary Doug Noel to, uh, read the official proclamation. Secretary Noel.
All right, thank you. Great Vine, uh, Great Vine Colleyville Independent School District Proclamation of Red Ribbon Week 2020. Whereas the State of Texas and Great Vine Colleyville Independent School District value the health and safety of all our citizens, and whereas substance abuse is particularly, particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources, our children, and a contributing factor in the three leading causes of death for teenagers, accidents, homicides, and suicides. And whereas it is the goal of the Texas Red Ribbon Campaign in the Great Vine Colleyville Independent School District to involve families, schools, businesses, churches, law enforcement agencies, and service organizations in all aspects of this campaign, and to establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, and ongoing initiatives to prevent illegal drug use. And whereas the Texas Red Ribbon Campaign theme promotes family and individual responsibility for living healthy, drug-free lifestyles without illegal drugs or the illegal use of legal drugs. And whereas there are, are many activities planned during the Red Ribbon Campaign in the Great Vine Colleyville Independent School District, now therefore, the Superintendent of Schools and the President of the Board of Trustees of the Great Vine Colleyville Independent School District do hereby proclaim October twenty-sixth through thirtieth as Red Ribbon Week throughout the school district. Furthermore, we urge all citizens to join in the week's activities and to work all year long to protect our community from the dangers of alcohol and other drugs. Signed, this twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth day of October, 2020.
Thank you very much, Secretary Noel. Thank you to all across the school district who will be participating, uh, in Red Ribbon Week. Uh, next, we've got the Great Vine Education Foundation Annual Update. At this time, we're going to be joined virtually by Executive Director of the Great Vine Colleyville Education Foundation, Sue Franks, for the foundation annual report. Sue?
Hello?
Hello, Sue.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Uh, good evening, everyone, and, uh, first of all, thank you for all of your service, all of you, the school trustees. I know it's, uh, it's a challenging position, and, uh, I appreciate your, uh, your, how hard you work in making our school district what it is. Uh, the Education Foundation would like to express its appreciation to the GCISD Administration and Board of Trustees for entrusting the foundation to the district's sports marketing program. We must thank our Mustang Panther Stadium sponsors for their support, which makes this contribution possible. Our anchor sponsors are Baylor Scott &amp; White Great Vine, Schroder Orthodontics, Sewell Automotive, founding sponsor Bank of the West, and premier sponsor BSN Sports. And to show that appreciation, I don't know if you can see this, but per our agreement with GCISD, I would like to present you with a check for, drum roll, forty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for your sports marketing portion. So, thank you again, and we look forward to partnering with GCISD for many, many years. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you, Sue. We really appreciate the partnership of you, uh, and the, uh, Edu, the Great Vine Colleyville Education Foundation. We're excited that, uh, you, we continue, even in the midst of a pandemic, uh, continue to thrive as a school district and as an education foundation. Thank you, Sue, for your leadership, and, uh, we really appreciate you.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan.
Next, we've got another partnership. That's a fantastic partnership, the Great Vine Colleyville ISD Council of PTA's Annual Update. And at this time, we're going to be joined virtually by Great Vine Colleyville ISD Council of PTA President Rachel Abel for the council's annual report. Rachel?
Hi, good evening, School Board Trustees and Dr. Ryan. Is it all right if I share my screen, Kyle Berger? Is that a possibility?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome, thank you. And I, can I, I can't see anyone right now. Can I get a confirmation that you can see my screen?
We can see it.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present to you on behalf of the GCISD Council of PTAs and all of our seventeen local PTAs. The mission of PTA is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. It is my privilege to share with you tonight how our PTAs are fulfilling this mission through our advocacy efforts, our family engagement, and our member programs. The year 2020 marks the council's thirtieth year anniversary. And while the celebration of turning thirty has been consumed by the COVID pandemic, we find it particularly important that our goals for this year continue what we've been doing for the past thirty years, and that is connecting our community. And our goals continue by bringing our community together, connecting the families with PTA, and bringing the community into the PTA. We wanna communicate through all available channels. We wanna celebrate and realize the importance and impact of PTA on current and future needs. We are collaborating weekly between campuses and sharing best practices and resources. And finally, we are constantly twisting and turning and inventing new ways to meet the new needs of our students, staff, and families. And I just wanna mention how impressed I've been with our local PTA leaders and their creativeness in order to overcome the pandemic hurdles. And I'm pushing enter. Ah, I'm pressing it. Hold on just a moment. I think there is a delay. Here we go. Now, here's a brief overview of our membership, volunteer hours, and fundraising efforts. Our district-wide membership number ended last year with eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-four memberships. And as you can see, we have had a steady increase of twenty-six percent over the past four years. And this is incredible growth. Thanks so much to our community. And two weeks ago, Texas PTA recognized our council with the Every Member Counts Ruby Award for last year's membership numbers. Three-fourths of our seventeen campus PTAs had a membership increase over the prior year, and only a few councils in the whole state of Texas has had this achievement. Last year, our campus PTAs earned dozens of awards. Three of our campuses, Bransford Elementary, Heritage Elementary, and Colleyville Middle School, earned the Voice for Every Child Platinum Award for their PTA memberships equalling their student enrollment. And this is our ultimate goal as we aim for one voice for every child. In addition, ten of our PTAs completed the president's challenge with a membership equal to at least fifty percent of the student enrollment. And thirteen of our PTAs earned the Golden Apple Award, which means every staff member and teacher on their campus joined the PTA. Looking forward to membership for this year, we are at about sixty-four percent of last year's membership number. Uh, we realize the significant challenges that the lack of in-person events have created on our campuses for PTA, and we are joining Texas PTA's latest membership campaign, the Greatest Comeback of 2020, that actually kicked off today. And I'm confident in time, we will be able to meet our membership goals. Uh, for our reported volunteers' hours for last year, we were at eighty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty hours. This equates to four point six FTEs, and using the Texas median income for two thousand and nineteen, those hours have a value of two point five million dollars. This number is a bit lower than the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen year. The pandemic and the shutdown of last spring affected the last quarter of the school year, as you know, and that is heavy in volunteer hours for banquets, teacher appreciation events, and probably our most popular event to support the elementary school field days. Moving on to fundraising, all of our campuses held PTA fundraising events last year, and our community supported our PTA programs to the tune of seven hundred thousand dollars. This equates to an average gross funding of forty-one thousand, two hundred per campus. Similar to volunteer hours, fundraising dollars were down this past year with almost every campus having a major fundraising event canceled in the spring. Those fundraising dollars, though, support student scholarships, classroom enrichment, staff appreciation events, literacy programs, outdoor classrooms, school dances, teacher supplies, parent programs, graduation events, school supplies, teacher grants, you name it, if there's a need, the PTA is there to help out. Our GCISD council holds events throughout the year to support our community. Last January, the council partnered with the nonprofit organization, Raise Your Hand Texas, to host a candidate forum on public education for House District Ninety-two and Ninety-eight. It was a great event, and it was standing room-only at the Colleyville Center that night. We also brought district volunteers together to celebrate our annual Founder's Day in February. Um, as I said earlier, we're celebrating our thirtieth anniversary, and all of our past presidents, and not all of them, many of our past council presidents were invited to attend. And in lieu of a guest speaker, we did a special interview with the past presidents. That was a lot of fun to watch. Also, in February, council hosted a watch party at the Mustang Panther Community Room as Texas PTA presented Straight Talk, a program for parents, students, and doctors discussing the vaping crisis in our teens. Students from a high school leadership program were able to join us for this watch party. This spring of 2020 was quite a busy blur for us, probably much like for you guys as well. Our council PTA reached out to the community. Our council PTA reached out to the community, and in less than twenty-four hours raised enough money to provide five hundred basic school supply kits to GCISD students in need. This is an amazing, community-wide effort. We also learned how to use WebEx and Zoom for the first time ever, and all of our PTAs were able to hold their annual elections online. Despite the shutdown, our PTAs appreciated our staff during the Teacher Appreciation Week in May, and we also awarded close to fifty thousand dollars worth of senior scholarships. Finally, Fiona Byrd from Glen Hope Elementary's Reflection Art Contest was awarded an overall Award of Excellence by Texas PTA for her film entitled The Rescue, and it actually advanced to the National PTA Reflections Program. In June, and right as the summer heat started to set in, our PTAs held the first-ever district appreciation event where we recognized the almost four hundred transportation, nutrition, facilities, and central administration workers with a drive-through breakfast at Mustang Panther Stadium. This was a first-time event, and this was a lot of fun. Also, after spending the summer preparing for the unknown, our PTAs celebrated our teachers as they started back to school in August. And it's so fun to watch how creative our PTAs are with survival kits, and masks, and, um, snow cone trucks, um, every kind of food box to go you can imagine. Um, they did not want the teachers to feel like we did not appreciate them, and we wanted to recognize how hard they had been working over the summer. Our Exceptional Children Committee, um, had, there is for, it's a support program for parents that learn, with children that learn outside the normal learning model. And they hosted their first-ever program with a virtual lunch and learn this past August to help parents of children that receive special services prepare for remote learning. They also hosted a parent panel on best practices a few weeks ago, and this is still a relatively new committee for us, and we're really excited that it's beginning to grow. This, in September, we had an annual favorite, the President's and Principal's Breakfast. And like other events, it was virtual. Our council executive board did an excellent job of preparing for the breakfast with eighty attendees. Many of you all were there, and many of you are quite the cahoot experts. Um, Texas PTA's annual summer training and convention called Launch was postponed in October, was postponed from July to October of this year, and it was held virtually. And our council, as I mentioned earlier, was recognized for receiving the Ruby Award. An exciting thing to note is next summer, the National PTA Convention will be held in Grapevine in June, and Texas PTA will return to, also return to Grapevine in July for their annual convention. So it's going to be a busy, um, PTA summer at the Gaylord. Since the school board elections were postponed from May to November, the council hosted their annual school board candidate forum, and this is our first in-person event of the year, and it was streamed live on Facebook, Facebook for those that were not able to attend in person. The forum videos online have had close to three thousand views. And finally, our GCISD E- Calendar is back for the second year, and it promotes restaurant nights that benefit any GCISD program, so booster clubs, PTAs, schools. Um, our community membership program continues, and it's an opportunity, and most of you guys here tonight are actually community members, and it allows you to join all seventeen of our PTAs on the council's website. And finally, going out within the week is going to be our very first-ever Council E- Newsletter, or it's called the E- Connection. Um, almost all fifty-five members of the council's, um, executive board have contributed to this newsletter that's highlighting each campus as well as each of the council committees. And fingers crossed, if it goes well, it's our hope to publish it quarterly. Finally, we want to thank you all, the GCISD school board and district staff, for the partnership and support you provide council, and our campus PTAs. It is this positive relationship that allows us to fulfill, fulfill our mission of supporting all of our GCISD students. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel, and thank you, uh, for your partnership and your leadership of a fantastic, uh, fantastic support for, uh, for our school district. Um, not only do you advocate for GCISD, but, uh, certainly, uh, Texas PTA is a strong advocate for public education all across the state of Texas, and we appreciate the partnerships, uh, that we have at every single campus with, with our parents through Texas PTA and through GCISD PTA. Thank you very much, Rachel. And that concludes tonight's recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. I'd impress if you're being able to pronounce some of our students' names. Those are very difficult names.
I'm just glad so many of them got to joining us, got to join us tonight. It, uh, it was a little bit later than we told them it would be, so I, I do appreciate them hanging in there with us.
Yes, thirty-four, that's just amazing. We'll jump right into open forum. I do not believe we had anyone sign up.
We had nobody signed up for open forum.
Thank you very much, and we'll jump, then go straight to our public hearing. And Diane, this is present the District's Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. It's the report for 2020, 2021, based on the 2018, 2019 data.
So as Diane pulls, uh, pulls that up, I'll talk a little bit more about that. The school districts are assigned a financial accountability rating under the FIRST system. Um, and, uh, that's from TEA, and so the primary goal of FIRST is to achieve quality performance in the management of school district's financial resources. The district has received the highest rating possible from TEA for each of the eighteen years that this program has existed. So, Diane, congratulations, and I'll let you, uh, move forward with your, uh, rating report. There we go.
Can you hear me now? Okay. I have to just, I guess, lean into it. Okay, so tonight, we're holding the public hearing to discuss the SchoolFIRST rating report, and as Dr. Ryan said, we do receive a superior rating, and this is, uh, based on the eighteen, nineteen fiscal year data. Just as a reminder, FIRST stands for Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. The SchoolFIRST was put into place with Senate Bill 218 of the Seventy-seventh Legislature, and the requirements for the district are that we prepare an annual financial accountability management report, and that we hold a public hearing to discuss that report and the rating. When the state is determining the FIRST, uh, scoring, they look at fifteen base indicators. These indicators are related to financial, student, and staff data. In order to receive a superior rating, you have to have a score of ninety to a hundred, and GCISD receives a score of ninety-six. There are some critical indicators that the state looks at, and if you do not pass these, you do not get, um, a positive FIRST report, so I wanted to just kind of go over those. Um, the first one is, did we report our audit report in a timely manner to TEA? And so you have thirty minutes, thirty days after December twenty-seventh to submit that to TEA. Indicator number two, did, uh, we receive an unmodified audit opinion that was free of material weaknesses in internal control? So for eighteen, nineteen, we did receive a clean audit with no findings. Uh, did we comply with debt agreements? We did make all our debt payments in a timely manner. And the last one is, did we make timely payments to TRS and other governmental agencies? And we did meet that one as well. I'm just going to go over some of the highlights of the other indicators. Um, indicator number six, this is one they look at to see if you have sufficient available cash, cash and investments. And as of June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, we had seventy-five point six million in cash and investment, so that is sufficient to cover operating expenditures for more than ninety days. Indicator number seven and eight looks at sufficient assets and liability ratios. It looks at both short-term and long-term. So, looking at our short-term, um, ratio of liabilities to assets, it was three point two five percent. And looking at long-term, uh, liabilities to assets is seventy-five point thirty-three percent. And so those district ratios are within the acceptable ranges. Indicator number nine just looks at the revenues. Did the revenues exceed the expenditure? And so, in, um, June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, we ended with more revenues and expenditures of three hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred and five. Indicator number ten looks at our sufficient debt service coverage ratio. Um, our fund balance at the end of the fiscal year was sufficient to make those annual debt payments. If you guys remember, we end on June thirtieth, and then we have a big payment in August, and so, um, there was enough funds in there to make that payment. And then indicator number eleven is a sufficient administrative cost ratio. So what they look at is what your administrative costs are versus all of your other costs. And so our ratio is seven point eight two percent, and that is below the state threshold of eight point five five percent. The annual financial and accountability management report for nineteen twenty that's based on eighteen, nineteen fiscal year data, with all of the required disclosures, is available to the public on the district's website. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Diane, and, uh, appreciate, uh, your report, and congratulations on the rating, and we'll be subject to any questions you may have in this here.
Do we have any question, do we have any questions? Let's see. Becky, you got a question?
Yeah, sorry. Um, the slides were going kind of fast. How many years in a row have we had, um, is, is this the one that we usually receive a rec-, uh, yeah, the superior rating? So how many years in a row have we had the superior rating?
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years in a row.
So it's, every year that it's been in place, uh, we see the superior rating.
Thank you, Diane.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Diane. And there's also, since it is a public hearing, we did not have anyone signed up to speak at this, so at this time, we will close the public hearing. We move on to the reports of the superintendent, and we'll move to item A, health update for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Yes, uh, as, uh, as our Director of Health Services, Amy Taldo, uh, joins us, I'll just, uh, uh, say that each month at this time, we, uh, provide an update to the board and to the community about the current state of COVID, and, uh, every month that we've, uh, been in this situation, uh, we've, uh, we've asked Amy to come give us a, a current update. In addition to the update, this is not the only thing that Amy does. Uh, Amy is busy all the time, uh, tracking down, uh, this disease and, and its effects on our students and our staff, and, um, uh, we just want to say thank you to Amy for, for all of your efforts. This is a twenty-four-seven kind of job at this time of, uh, of the pandemic. Uh, it's, uh, there's no such thing as weekends. Things happen on Saturday, things happen on Sunday, uh, where, uh, uh, Amy has to rush into, uh, into action. And so, Amy, uh, welcome to the, uh, board meeting tonight. We, uh, look forward to hearing, uh, your report, and we also thank you for the work that you and your team of health services, nurses all across the district are doing to try to keep our students and staff safe.
Good evening, uh, Board of Trustees. Dr. Ryan, thank you for your kind words. That kind of took me off guard for just a second. Um, well, for the five metrics that Tarrant County has established for safer in-person instruction, I am kind of sad to report that we are seeing an increase in all five metrics. Uh, when it comes to positivity rate of the test, in September, it was nine percent. Uh, today, it is twelve percent, so we've increased by two percent in the positivity. New cases, they would like for that to be under two thousand per week. In September, we were at twenty-four thirty-one. In October, we are at forty-five eighteen. So, uh, almost double, or right at double. I'd have to do the math, it's eight something, I probably wouldn't do well with it. COVID-like illness, in September, it was one point nine percent of COVID-like illness they were seeing in the emergency rooms. October, it is three point seven percent. And hospitalizations, in September, it was seven percent. In October, today, it was fourteen percent, so it has doubled. We have seen increases in the number of cases, positive cases, um, every week for the last, uh, one, two, three, four, five weeks. When it comes to, um, our cities, we are still seeing, um, a slow and steady increase in the cases in both Colleyville, Grapevine, and Ulyss. What I wanted to also mention is, we have started tracking, um, internally, just started tracking, uh, by week, um, the number of cases and how it affects, um, if it's a staff, if it's a student, whether it's in-person, remote, extracurricular, um, and if we have had contacts who have become positive. So from a ca-, a positive case, we put several people into quarantine, usually several per case, and from those that are in quarantine, how many have become positive? And, um, for the last one, two, three, four, five weeks, um, our rate of contacts becoming positive is three point one two percent. And that sounds a little scary, but yet, it is exactly why we use quarantine, because if those people that become positive are in quarantine, then we have stopped them from spreading it even further in our schools and in our activities and other things that are, um, campus-related. So, uh, that's actually a, a kind of a good news in that quarantine is working. Um, I know it's, uh, difficult and sometimes very inconvenient, um, but it is definitely a tool in the toolbox that we have been able to utilize and then stop further, some further, um, infections, um, from spreading continuously through the campuses. Um, the other, uh, statistic that has kind of brought some attention is, in July, the cases by age group for fifteen and under was at five percent. September, it was at six percent, and today, it is at seven percent. The age group of fifteen to age twenty-four has only gone up one percent, but the ages of fifteen and younger have gone up two percent in the last several months, and that's something that I'm kind of watching on, because that is majority of our age group minus a few years. Um, and that, right now, is the help, the simplified health report. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you so much, Amy. Do we have any questions, the trustees, Doug?
Yes, uh, Amy, it, it seems like, you know, our, I guess for lack of a better way to phrase it, our, our mitigation measures are working. Uh, we, we're having Co-, COVID cases come in, but we're not having much spread, uh, very little to no spread in, in the school. I, I appreciate the three point one percent, um, contacts becoming positive, but would you say it's fair to say that it's, we're not having transmission within the school?
We are having a very low amount of transmission in this school, and some of it can be related to household contacts, siblings, um, and household contacts are naturally, uh, more likely to be exposed because you're all in the house together, no mask, everybody's on the couch eating dinner. And so, um, what we have seen are some of those are siblings of positive cases, but we are not having a lot of spread, um, within classrooms, within grades, within campuses.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, are, are the health depart-, are, is, I guess, Tarrant County Health Department or Texas, uh, or the CDC or wherever, are they, have they made any changes to recommendations on protective measures?
I spoke to Josh Kirchner, who is our contact at Tarrant County today, and he said that he was in a meeting, and they were actually discussing that they are going to be up, um, I wouldn't say upgrade, but they are going to be making edits to their guidance that came out in August, and, but he didn't know when it would be published. So I do know that they are relooking at some, um, items, he didn't tell me which ones, but I do see that coming out probably in the next, definitely by next month. Um, some new gu-, maybe not new guidance, but edits to the current guidance from Tarrant County Public Health.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, any other questions? Becky? I'm sorry, neither one. Jorge or Becky?
Okay, I got, uh, Amy, so a kind of a, a piggybacking on Doug's question, so, um, also, are we, are we seeing or not seeing, uh, the spread, say, from student to teacher or from staff to staff either, um, in your observations as far as, is what type of spread we're seeing? And thank you for that note on siblings, it's really important. Um, what, what are we seeing with, uh, the transmission?
We're, again, we're seeing very low numbers, um, from staff to students or students to staff. There have been, um, very limited, um, and I'm trying to think if I actually even have one staff to staff. Um, yes, we have had several staff to staff. Um, and so it's just a great time to remind everybody of the three Ws, to watch your distance, being a huge one of six feet, and wearing a mask properly over your nose and mouth, and to wash your hands as much as possible.
You. Jorge?
Do you have a list of the total number of cases for students and the total number of cases for staff?
Yes. Let me make you click in the background noise here, and I can get that for you. So the number of staff since September 14th is 21, and the number of students since the week of September 14th is 68.
Well, do you have this historical number, like the total for each?
That was the total for each.
Well, I think numbers of 47. So 21 is the total number we ever had of staff with COVID?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And Amy, that 68, does that include our remote students?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have it broken down on how many in-person and how many remote?
Yes, ma'am. In-person since September 14th is 43. Remote since September 14th is 18. And remote with extracurricular activities is seven.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other questions? Seeing we have none. Amy, thank you so much again for taking your time to give us this monthly report. We really appreciate it, and all of your nurses and your staff.
Thank you.
We will move on to item B, statewide economic outlook. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, thank you very much. And we do have, really, it's a treat for somebody to joining us, joining us this evening. Kristy Rome is the Executive Director of the Texas School Coalition, based in Austin, but it's, it's an organization that represents at the state level all of the Robin Hood districts all across the state of Texas, or many of them. Kristy is, her reputation is of a fantastic financial, school finance mind, and many people in the, in the capital look to Kristy for information and for guidance. And Kristy, thank you for joining us tonight. Kristy is going to talk to us about, really, the statewide economic outlook and what we might be looking forward to in the next few months as we enter legislative session season. So Kristy, thank you for joining us, and take it away.
All right. Well, thank you for having me, and if I can get things rolling. All right, are you guys seeing my screen okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, excellent. Well, again, it's good to be able to join you, even if it is virtually. I'm always glad to be in and around this most excellent district. And I will say that in this position, I am often the bearer of bad news, and given the topic this evening, that trend continues. But I think it's important for us to work from a good set of facts, even if we don't like the picture that they paint. So we'll dive in, and just to give you a brief overview of what we're going to talk about this evening, we'll look at sources of school funding and state revenue just to set the context, that economic outlook for our state, learn a little bit from history, see what that can teach us, and then take a look at the road ahead. So I'm sharing with you just kind of in general, sources of school funding and state revenue, again, to set that context and to make sure that we're all understanding what all of these different economic indicators mean, because I'm going to throw a lot of information at you in this one slide, and it is okay if you can't read all of those labels, because the most important part for you to pay attention to are the two green pieces of the pie. And that's what share of general revenue expenditures for our state go towards public education. It's the line share of the state budget, 38%, more so than Health and Human Services, at least for now. We'll see what happens next session. But public education is the largest expenditure in our state. What that funds, as you see over on the total general operations funding for school districts statewide, is that now 46% of funding for public schools comes from that state share. Now, you probably are thinking, but not in GCISD, and you're correct, because as you all know, the vast majority of your budget comes from the local MNO property tax. You have a small portion of state funding in your district. What we need to be recognizing here, though, is that regardless of which of these two state and local share pies we look at, if the pie on the left becomes smaller, the pie on the right does as well. Because even for a district like GCISD that's relying heavily on local revenue to fund your schools, because of equalization in our state, they will cause that recapture to increase if they have to decrease the size of the pie for all schools. Just something to keep in mind. And we might be wondering, well, where does state revenue come from that funds that general revenue for schools, primarily from the sales tax? So we're going to talk a little bit more about the sales tax, more so than the other sources of state revenue tonight. Obviously, an economic shutdown has had an impact on the sales tax. So as we look to the economic outlook, of course, we know we're going to see a lot of downward trends. You won't be surprised by this graph. I've tried to make the sales tax line a little bit bigger so that we can focus on that, because it's our main source of revenue. But you can see from this graph of fiscal year 20, that we saw a significant dip during the economic shutdown in the spring, April, May. We saw things pick back up again in July as things were reopening, and now we've seen a bit of a downturn again in August, and that's kind of plateauing into September, which is not shown here. But we don't still see the same amount of growth that we did earlier, a little bit earlier. So I told you, we look at state sales tax revenue. This is looking at all funds, so not just the general revenue, because general revenue funds do some wonky things when you have to put a large portion aside to the highway fund, for example. So this is just looking at what was collected. And the important takeaway here is that our current budget was built on the assumption that sales tax revenue was going to increase, that everything was going to be above that zero line. And in fact, it's been quite the opposite since the pandemic, the onset of that in March. So this 2.9 is our last really good month of that trend. That was March, then we see April, May, June. Again, July picked back up, but then we see another dip again in August and September. So these are comparing what the sales tax revenue was in that month in fiscal year 2019 to what we saw in 2020. So this is not looking at month-to-month as far as, you know, May to June. It's looking and comparing to where we were last year, and we again thought we would be doing better than last year, and in many cases, we're doing worse. So what a difference a year makes, amen, not just for budget, but everything that you're working with in your school district as well, very different from where we were in the summer of 2019, when the budget was certified, and we believed that we would have a budget surplus of almost $3 billion. Healthy rainy day fund, the economic stabilization fund, that's $9.4 billion. There might be some additional money that was used for Medicaid. That's always, you know, another billion for Medicaid is not outside the norm. Then, of course, after the pandemic and the onset of that, in July of this year, Commissioner Hager came back with a revised revenue estimate that said, well, instead of the surplus, we now have a $4.6 billion deficit, and we have less in the economic stabilization fund, because that's, of course, funded by the severance tax, so oil and gas, and that's continued weak market, 8.8 is, is, we're going to get there. The good news, though, one little piece of good news, is that we are not going to, we don't believe the state will have to appropriate additional funding to Medicaid because federal funds have kicked in to cover that. So this is just to give you the perspective of the starting point of our state budget in recent bienniums. And the more recent trend is that we've seen a surplus to begin the budget writing process. We already know we're going to have a deficit of $4.6 billion. I would not be surprised if we have a revised estimate again when we, when we see that biennial revenue estimate that comes out in January, that that $4.6 billion deficit is going to be greater than what was projected at this point in time. But even if it's just the 4.6, it's important to keep in mind that that's actually a $9.3 billion swing from where we were when we were building the budget at the beginning of the last budgetary session. Again, the economic stabilization fund, this is just to give you the context of that, the ups and downs, the deposits, the expenditures from that fund. I know there have been times in the past when we, as public school districts, have questioned, why are you keeping so much in that economic stabilization fund when we have desperate needs with serving the students in our districts? I think now, at this point, we're probably glad that it has the balance that it does as we're looking at potential cuts. Again, that $8.8 billion number is adjusted downward from where it once was. So that deficit of $4.6 billion, this is how we get there. Actually, what the Commissioner said is that we have 11.6 billion less in-state revenue, that slowing of tax collections. But this revised revenue estimate, knowing more than we once knew, also is able to recognize that we have $7 billion of previously unrecognized state savings, primarily from increased property values that are above where they thought they would once be. So put those two things together, and that's how you find out, that's how you find yourself with the $4.6 billion shortfall. So you might be asking, what are the details of that savings of $7 billion? Well, they come primarily from the Foundation School Program. Now, I need to clarify here, it looks nice and neat and tidy, and unfortunately, most state budget numbers are not this neat and tidy. If you were to total up the 3.5, the 1.2, and the 2.3, you get 7 billion. It's not quite as neat and tidy as that. There are other state savings, because there is some overlap here between the federal ESAR funding from the CARES Act and the reduction in state aid. So there's some overlap there. It's not quite as neat and tidy as just $7 billion. But regardless of that, a significant portion of the $7 billion in savings comes from a reduced amount of state funding going towards the Foundation School Program. And I will note that part of this $2.3 billion here in increased property tax collections that resulted in $700 million more in recapture than was originally projected when Hospital 3 passed. Speaking of Hospital 3, we know that there was a significant investment made in public education during the 2019 legislative session. $6.4 billion were invested into schools, $5.2 billion invested into reducing property taxes. And that $5.2 billion cost is going to balloon over time because the state has committed to buying down that property tax rate a little bit more each and every year. That's going to continue to increase in cost in an era of now cost containment. So there are, there were questions when this bill passed about the sustainability of those investments long-term, now even more so than before. Something else that Hospital 3 promised was a reduction in recapture. So this is just to give you a snapshot of the past five years. Are we really seeing a reduction from when this bill was adopted in 2019? The blue here represents recapture statewide. The red line is to show you that you're pretty much on the same trend line as the state in the amount of dollars that are paid, that are paid out of Grapevine, Colliville, ISD in recapture. Now, we don't, you know, what's missing from this slide is a huge reduction in recapture, but I would submit to you that Hospital 3 was more of a preventative measure when it comes to recapture, that it prevented recapture from becoming as bad as it would have been absent of that legislative change. It doesn't really deliver actual recapture reduction compared to the previous years, per se, but it does stunt the growth of recapture. We'll put it that way. So I think there's something to be learned from history. If we look back at the two previous recessions and the way the legislature responded, we might be able to glean some indication of what we can expect in this coming legislative cycle. The 2001 recession was caused following the September 11th attacks in 2001. So the 2003 legislature entered into the budget cycle with a shortfall, and here's how they addressed it. They had some general revenue cuts, they used some budget gimmicks, which we'll get into a little bit more in a bit, they had some federal funds, and they spent out of the rainy day fund. And those are pretty much the tactics that legislature has with which to address a shortfall. So the Great Recession was caused by the subprime mortgage lending crisis, the Great Recession in 2008. We didn't really feel the effects of that as quickly in Texas as they did elsewhere in the nation, partly because of our biennial legislative cycle. So in 2009, the US Congress adopted a stimulus package, and the Texas legislature used that to fill some holes so that we didn't have the cuts in 2009. So when they convened in 2011 with the absence of additional federal funding, they had to dig deep and make some cuts. They had a huge shortfall when that session began, and as we all know, that did result in some cuts to public education funding. $6.4 billion was cut from public education funding, and that resulted in a $14.2 million cut to GCISD. So these are the ways, again, that when the legislature was faced with a shortfall, this is how they responded. We see some eerily familiar circumstances as we look to what we might see in 2021. First of all, it's on the heels of some major property tax compression legislation. We know that we're in a national and state economic recession. We've already seen some federal stimulus dollars for the CARES Act. There may be more federal stimulus dollars to come in '21. Well, after the end of November 3rd, I'll tell you my best guess then. We know that there's going to be a state budget shortfall, and we've already seen the same requests of state agencies to reduce their budgets by 5%. We may see calls for even greater reductions. The Foundation School Program is exempt from those calls for reductions at this time. So as we compare this to previous recessions, again, this is from the Center on Budget and Policy Priorities. This is looking at state budgets on a national level, so this is not Texas-specific, but I still think it gives you a pretty good overview and prediction of what some economic experts are predicting, that this recession may well be worse than the Great Recession, the Greater Recession, I don't know, that doesn't have a nice ring to it. Again, we might not see the full onset of how, the effects of this recession, and possibly until 2023. We don't know if the worst of it's going to hit us in '21, or if the worst of it's going to hit us in '23 just yet. Isn't that nice to know? We don't know which biennial is going to be worse. So it is an uncertain road ahead. As we look just at this current school year, we believe that the shortfall in the current biennial should be able to be managed without cuts during the current school year, but I just want to throw out there that it is still a possibility, because the legislature will convene in January. They can adopt a supplemental appropriations bill, they will adopt a supplemental appropriations bill, we just don't know what will be in it. One thing that could be in it is a reduction of some form for school funding. We hope that's not the case, and hope that's not necessary, but it's a possibility. State leaders have also begun to talk about the possibility of requiring districts to spend down their undesignated fund balance of dollars, to either avoid having to spend out of the economic stabilization fund, or perhaps coupled with that expenditure. And I want to just say that there is an authority from the state legislature to force a district to spend down fund balance. However, the state legislature does control what your funding entitlement is. And one thing that's been done in other states is that the state, other states have reduced school districts' funding entitlements based on what they have in their undesignated fund balance. So just something for you all to keep in mind. Also, that schools have been given so far a whole harmless protection that will last the first semester, the first 18 weeks of the instructional year, and then also the local flexibility for remote instruction that lasts for the entire school year. We don't know exactly what's going to happen when that whole harmless runs out. And we have seen a 3% to 4% decline in enrollment statewide, and it's just a matter of, are the legislature, is the legislature going to allow districts to take that hit in the reduction of funding, or is that something that they will, again, help to make up for in an era when we have increased costs for serving kids? So tools in the fiscal toolbox, these are some tactics, gimmicks that legislators could employ. I want to caution you and say these I want to caution you and say these are one-time measures, which means that you can only use them one time, and then they're gone. Usually, when these have been used in the past, one, two, sometimes three sessions later, they will come back and restore these one-time measures so that they're available again for the next downturn. So all of these are kind of on the table right now. We've already talked about the $8.8 billion in the Economic Stabilization Fund. They can delay the August payment for the Foundation School Program into the next biennium so that they can save $2 billion more immediately. Same thing with other delayed payments and transfers. I think it's a question, though, of do you employ all of these one-time measures in '21? Because then what if things do get worse, and you come back in '23, and you have none of these tools available to you? Or will legislators use some of these measures, a combination of other reductions? Those are the tough decisions that they'll have to make. Because they look at the budget that they're going to have to write. I think that, again, that biennial revenue estimate that we will receive the day before the legislative session begins in January, I think it could paint a worse picture than the $4.6 billion shortfall we've been hearing about so far. If they were to adopt a current services budget that just maintains existing state spending and also supports the growing cost of public education and tax rate compression that they've already adopted into law, economic growth of 20% or greater would be required to, in order to meet that current services. The highest amount of economic growth on history in Texas was in recovering from the 2010, 2011 recession, and that was 20.9% growth. So that's definitely a stretch goal to think that we might be able to get there at this point in time. Even with the one-time tools, I would say that cuts are not completely off the table or unlikely. That's very much a possibility this session. Will they postpone further tax rate compression? Are they going to still add that to the increased cost column? We don't know at this point in time. And then, again, I would submit to you that there's going to be a greater need for spending in Health and Human Services. We're still in the middle of a pandemic, and I don't know that by the time legislature is finally adopting their budget, in what I hope is May of 2021, I don't know that we're going to be completely through the pandemic by then. So the Health and Human Services needs, the unemployment rates that have been a record high, that drives up the need for Human Services and the need for spending in Health and Human. So public education is going to be competing with that very pressing need as well. So with all of that good news, I will stop talking, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Kristi.
Do we have any questions? Becky?
Yeah, Kristi, this is Becky St. John. With regard to the Foundation School Program, you weren't showing much reduction there. Can you explain that a little bit more? And what are you hearing, if anything, because I'm, there's going to be some seat changes, out of the SBOE with regard to how they're handling their control of the investment?
Oh, so the Permit School Fund?
Yes.
I have not heard that there will be much of a change. You know, obviously, it's not going to be, it's not performing to the degree that it has in the past. So I think that there will be potentially less of a transfer. The good news, though, is that we recently approved a constitutional amendment that allows for them to transfer a little bit more money from the available school fund than we've seen in the past. So hopefully, that will help to make up the difference, at least this time around. Again, what's going to happen in '23 is a whole lot less certain.
Yeah, they could only go to that well so many times, I suppose. And then, yeah, so that actually was kind of two questions. So with regard to the Foundation School Program, you weren't showing a whole lot of change there. I'd have to go back to the slide. It was like 100, was it 105? You weren't showing a lot of movement there. Can you touch on why that is, a lot of change there?
I'm not, oh, let's see, I bet...
Probably about halfway back.
Was it this one? Am I sharing again? No?
Not yet.
Is that it, Becky?
Yep, yep, the FSD.
Okay. So the, this is just from the revenue estimates from what's been adopted in the budget today.
Okay, yeah, yeah. This was actually the one. So what, what's your, I'm sorry, my question really wasn't, so my concern here is the piece on the local, local property taxes, which includes recapture, right? You're showing it going up about $2.3 billion. And that's all predicated on property values increasing, that's my question. And of course, for school districts like us, the piece still comes into play there as well. The comptroller is still going to come out with his estimate. We couldn't get those numbers to drop even if we wanted to, because the appraisal district still has to hit the targets that the comptroller comes out with. Is that correct?
Yes. So property taxes are assessed based on where the values were January 1st. So that's why we have not seen changes in property values during this school year. And I think that we will likely see some change in the collections, because we have begun to see both citizens and businesses that are unable to pay the taxes based on unemployment and business closures and things of that nature. But we don't yet know exactly what the impact on property values is going to be in the next year.
Right.
When we get to January 1st of '21, what those values will look like.
Right, okay, all right.
Some areas of the state are holding their values even during the recession. I imagine that the area that you all are in is probably one of those. Other areas have already seen a very steep decline, especially in our oil and gas districts.
Oh, wow, wow. So I guess, yeah, be careful what you ask for. Stable is, stable is good when your home is your largest asset, so, thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Do we have any other questions? Dr. Ryan?
Kristi, thank you so much for joining us, and, you know, your knowledge about state budgeting is just incredible, and we're certainly glad that you're able to represent the Texas School Coalition, and we appreciate all you do to help us during the session and in between. We'll be posting your presentation soon. And thank you again for joining us. I'm glad you don't have to get in your car and drive back to Austin at this point.
Well, thank you for having me.
You bet. Thank you, Kristi.
We just have a motion to go home after that. Thank you, Kristi. We'll move on to item C, Act on Joint Election Agreement.
Yes, so GCISD is going to conduct a school board election on November the 3rd, and state election law requires school districts to conduct joint elections with at least one city within the school district boundaries. And this law and the requirements to use electronic voting machines created a need to coordinate the elections across the county. Therefore, the Tarrant County Elections Office has created a single joint elections agreement for all school districts and cities within Tarrant County. It is, you can see this attached, and the recommendations for the board trustees to approve the joint election agreement as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. We have a recommendation to have a motion. Jesse?
Yes, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation, please.
Thank you, Jesse, in a second.
I'll second that.
Mindy, thank you very much. Any discussion? See you in nine. All of us in favor? Motion carries 7-0. Move on to item B, Act on Maximum Class Size Exception.
Yes, so this month, we have a couple of additions to the maximum class size exception for 22 to 1. Each week, the Human Resources Department conducts a review of class sizes at elementary level, and currently, the class size numbers constitute three different models at the elementary level: all students in person, all students in remote, and a combination of in-person and remote learners. Classes will fluctuate as we move through the year with COVID-19, and each time the elementary class size goes beyond 22 to 1, the administration will bring that information to the board trustees for consideration of a class size waiver. Nine class size waivers were approved at September board meeting. Currently, only two of those classrooms are above the 22 to 1 class limit, so this does fluctuate. One third-grade classroom at Bransford and a fourth-grade classroom at Cannon. So the current elementary classes that have classes larger than 22 to 1 are at Bransford Elementary, three third-grade classrooms, each has 23. Heritage Elementary School, one fourth-grade classroom with 23 remote students, and a first-grade classroom with 23 remote students. And at Timberline, we have one third-grade classroom with 23 in-person students. The recommendations for the board trustees to approve the request for maximum class size exception for three third-grade classrooms at Bransford, one fourth-grade classroom at Heritage Elementary, and one first-grade classroom at Heritage Elementary, one third-grade classroom at Timberline Elementary School.
I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Sorry. Do you have a second? Becky, in a second. Any, any questions, Doug?
Yes, are the two classes from last, our last, last month's meeting that are still above the 22 to 1 ratio, are those currently 23, or what is the number on those?
Yeah, let's bring Gemma in so she can answer that specifically. Gemma, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me, Kyle?
Yes, you're good. Did you hear the question, Gemma?
I did, yes, I did. So I believe, Doug, that they are at 23. I will double-check that information and get that to you tomorrow.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Gemma. Any other questions? Becky?
Gemma, on those, are those remote or in-person? The ones that are, that are still over? And then, I guess, kind of a question and observation, I should have pulled these to compare our numbers, but on the three, Dr. Ryan, you may know this, the three schools that we're looking at here, how full are they in terms, let's see, actually, it's more to Heritage Elementary. How full is Heritage? In other words, if some of these remote students opt to go back in the, at the next semester, have we got space for them?
We do have space, that's right. So, of course, we've got space for every student if they're remote, if they want to come back into our schools, we're going to welcome them with, with open arms, and we'll, we'll work out the numbers as they, as they come back to us.
Okay, but we probably wouldn't have to, that wouldn't possibly not trigger, I guess, at that point, what difference does it make whether the waiver is for in-person or remote?
Right, so a lot of that has to, has to be a balance of remote and in-person learners. And so every, every time, as the board knows, every time that there's a time for people to come back into our schools, and all of this kind of gets reshuffled, and we have to continue to build a different master schedule just about every time that they, that they come back.
And Gemma, do we know if those two that are over the limit right now are the remote or in-person?
No, I don't know that, but I'll get that to you tomorrow.
Excellent.
The principal has provided a large spreadsheet with everything, so I do know where every student is, and it would just, I can get that for you tomorrow. And if everybody came back in person, we would not have class size waivers. So it's just the combination of all of this. We have enough teachers in the right grade levels at the right locations, and so just each nine weeks, it looks a little bit different, depending on how the students elect to come and receive their instruction.
Okay, thank you, Gemma.
Jorge, yes?
So I guess maybe I didn't understand your last comment, because I am trying to think about the, you know, we had this discussion with the community about how many kids we had at GCISD and how many kids left. And I know that if you count I-University Prep and the kids that actually are in the brick-and-mortar schools and the remote learners, we're pretty much at 99% of the number that we have at the end of May. So we have the same number of kids, we have more than I-University Prep, a little bit less at the brick-and-mortar schools, including remote learners. I guess maybe I don't understand why we have so many more waivers requested than in previous years. And you're saying that if everybody came back, we would not have that many waivers. So can you explain that, why?
Yes. So because of the number of students that have selected in-person versus remote and vice versa, dividing them up, if you have four teachers per grade level, which a lot of our elementaries do have four teachers per grade level, you would need 22, 22, 22, 22. If some of those remote learners equal 28, then we have a choice, and we have to decide, well, do we put all the remote learners in one classroom? Do we divide up the remote learners so that every teacher does a hybrid model? And so Dr. Schaber has worked very closely with our elementary principals, and the principals have worked with their teachers to decide what is best, once they're given the data on the students who are coming back. So it's just a simple math problem of trying to divide those students in those four classrooms with the strengths of the teachers, the needs of that grade level, making sure that we're serving everybody appropriately.
So if, I mean, that's a great example, like you mentioned, if you have four teachers, and you have perfectly, well, will be 22, 22, 22, 22, you don't have that, you will have 18, 18, 18, 28, remote. Will you, can you take us through the process of, like, you know, I'm just thinking about the challenges of somebody doing hybrid, right, versus keeping everybody together at 28 remote, and the other three at just regular, including classroom instruction at less than 22? Isn't that a better solution for everybody, even though that one teacher might have a little more students, but it's remote, versus having to have teachers doing hybrid, which I know is a lot more challenging?
Well, I'm going to ask Kyle to bring over Dr. Schaber, but, you know, one of the things while he's doing that, when you, when you do have somebody, a teacher who is now grading 28 papers or 32 papers versus someone who's grading 14 papers, or having 28 parent conferences versus having 14 parent conferences, so the workload does increase. It does seem like it would, it would, it would work out, and in some situations, it does. Each one of these is an individual and unique decision that they've gone through.
So in response to the question about really looking at the division of the students, as Gemma said, it really is an individual by grade level conversation, in that the younger grades, where our teachers are accustomed to teach in a self-contained setting, meaning they teach all of the subjects, it may look different than in the upper grades, generally third, fourth, and fifth, where the teachers are more accustomed to teaching in departmentalized, where they might specialize in math or the humanities. So all of those factors, we really look at by campus, by grade, to determine, overall, as you stated, if we can put a class that is all in-person, that may have fewer students, and then a class that has all of our remote students to make that above the 22, that sometimes is an easier manage and a better instructional setting for the students, because they're also not juggling back and forth between who's in-person and who is remote. So when that has been possible in our grade levels, that has really been the ideal setting, when a class can be all in-person or all remote. There are times when that is not the best instructional setup. Sometimes that's those older grades, where the teachers are more accustomed to teaching departmental, so they might stay and remain in a blended setting, therefore, not needing, they're still able to divide the students kind of evenly and not have that same need for the waivers that we have.
But you would never, you would never split, like, let's say you have too many kids that are remote, and maybe you have 28, for example. You will never make more than one teacher do hybrid, correct? I mean, those, those six students that are above 22 would be with one teacher, so that one teacher does remote, one teacher does hybrid, and the other two will be... So that one teacher does remote, one teacher does hybrid, and the other two will be doing in-school instruction 100% versus, versus spreading the remote learners into all these other classrooms, correct?
I'd love to say that is correct, however, that is not because we actually have given our teachers at each campus a lot of the voice, where they look at what kids instructional model. And our teachers are really dedicated to their students. When they get their class rosters at the beginning of the year and they get to know their kids, they claim them as their own. And many of our teachers have chosen and expressed that they would prefer, prefer to continue to teach in that hybrid, that blended class, so that they can keep their own kids. Other teachers in grade levels on different campuses are able to see, hey, we can collaborate together and share our kids and really all kind of take, take ownership of the whole group. So we do have some instances where there may be four remote kids in each of the four blended classrooms across, across the grade level. If it is designed that way, it is because of unique instructional needs or that, that, the teacher group has collaborated together and really provided their voice to choose that as the way in which they want to continue teaching their students. So it truly looks different by grade, by campus, by looking at the data each time we have changes and talking over all of the possibilities with the campus leadership team and the teachers so that they are able to have a voice in, how can they be the best teacher for their group of kids and set that up for success for our students?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to say, just a, just a comment, just a general comment, that I hope that these decisions, I mean, I know it's, it's okay, but I just want to make sure that, you know, we're talking about teacher voice, which is very important, we use student voice, which is very important. But at the end of the day, it is, I, I remember the old days in DCISD in many districts where we were spreading the GT students among the different teachers to make it fair, to have the ECP kids, everybody being, you know, spread around, among them, you know, that, that's not something that we do that anymore. But I'm just hoping that, you know, at the end of the day, we look what is the best for the student, right? So I, I do understand the teachers' preferences and, and, and that's great, but it's, it's definitely very important to make sure that is, is the student benefiting from whatever decision we're making because a lot of times, you know, it might be great for the teacher and the teacher feels that that's, that's the best thing because she loves the students and, and they have this classroom. But, you know, and, and I'm just hoping that we look at also, once the decision is made, if the performance is not there for whatever student we're talking about, that we, we also take that into consideration. I just want to make that, I just said, general comment.
Well, I, Jorge, you say that, but I think what is so great is that we are allowing each school to do what they know is best for their students and we're not making them do it a set way. So all of these students, all these teachers know their students and they know, per campus, per grade, what works best for them. And I think it's wonderful that we listen to the teachers and they know their students and we're allowing them to do what's best for their kids. So I'm, I'm very proud that our district has, has set the standards of that, that, that we're trusting our teachers to know what's best for their kids.
I, I guess the other thing is, if, I know this is a personal decision from the parents to keep their kids remote versus not, but are we working these parents hard if they, the kids are struggling, you know, in remote and trying to bring them in? I mean, that's something that we're constantly doing to make sure that kids get the, the help they need because I know there's some issue with COVID and what families feel about it might vary. But a lot of times, I'm just concerned that a lot of times we are keeping kids remote when they should be in school.
I, I can speak to that as well. We definitely have our campus leadership teams across the district that as we approached during the time in which our parents were able to make the instructional decision for the second grading period, our campus leadership teams were reviewing our student success and the academic achievement and had parent-teacher conferences, sometimes parent-principal conferences in which they were discussing the academic success or the challenges, possibly student engagement that was not there, even attendance, even though virtual not there. And in some cases, definitely made recommendations that a student be in-person because the, the attendance and engagement and the instruction in the remote setting was not there. We've had many changes to in-person as a result of those conversations that have taken place across the district. So can very much say that that is an area that our campus teams are staying in close contact with families. Even though we have had those conversations and lots of changes made as a result, there are instances that no matter what data we're able to present, it is still the choice of the family to remain in a remote setting. And at this time, that choice, that final decision is actually still, still their option. But we are absolutely making those contacts where our students are struggling in a remote setting to have them in-person.
Are we being also more flexible once, once a parent decides to stay home, for example? And then the kids start to struggle, you know, are we, are we allowing them to come back to school even though they decided to stay remote? I mean, that's something that we are a lot less, because I know we were pretty strict in the first, I believe, based on comments, that we're pretty strict. We're starting to see the, you know, do the process and, you know, getting to the guidelines and all that. But now, after so many weeks, are we more flexible about, you know, I decide to go remote, stay remote for the second nine weeks, but then my kids are really, is really struggling, can we send them back?
Regardless of any deadline, we are encouraging those, our campus teams to look individually at student situations. So even if a deadline has passed to make that instructional change, if a student is demonstrating that struggle in the remote setting, they are able to make that change when there has been that collaborative conversation and planning that happens with the campus team and the parent in order to improve the opportunities for the student to learn in an in-person setting. So, yes, short answer, we are allowing some of those changes. They are on an individual case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jorge. Any other, any other questions or comments? Becky?
Yeah, Lisa, the only thing, I, kind of to complement what you were saying there, I think it's really incumbent upon parents to have open lines of communications with their child's teacher and not to sit in silence stewing over something that could probably be addressed directly at the campus level or wait until the window opens again for change to address an issue. That, that our teachers are there in the same availability that they've always been, you know, to, to listen to parents and to try to come up with, is what Dr. Schaber is describing, a collaborative decision that's in the best interest of the student. And I do agree with Jorge, you know, the bottom line does have to be the student. And those parents, you know, if there's an issue, I, I hope that they're addressing it, you know, at the campus, speaking with the teacher, working with the teacher, rather than, you know, hopefully not just getting so frustrated, they're just, you know, worn out and not, you know, sitting in silence and not getting the things addressed. So it, it's got to be a collaborative effort, that teacher voice, the student voice, but also the parent voice has to be present, too.
Very true. Any other? The vote before this is on the Act on Maximum Class Size. Motion carries 7-0. Move on to item E, Act on Texas Association of School Boards Policy Update 115 Affecting Local Policies. Dr. Ryan?
Yes, the board has had access to update 115 for several weeks. And Paula is our policy guru and who leads our policy review committee through every one of these policies. And I'll ask Paula to have a quick introduction and I'll provide the recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Update 115 really took apart the F-series in regard to student welfare. Those policies individually become rather lengthy and as a result of the last legislative session and even part of Senate Bill 11, with the additions, they needed to split apart some of those policies to create individualized policies on the subject matters of like counseling and mental health. So you saw reorganization of some of those things and I'm pointing to saying that this is no longer here and now, it's over there. The other big change really has to do with the Title IX regulations that needed to be incorporated into policies. Those were effective as of August 14th of this school year. And so that has been included in this update. This is another update to include the last of the items from the 86th legislative session and then even from that revised administrative code rules that would have been a part or as a result of that legislative session. So those things have been included as well. As Dr. Ryan mentioned, you know, our district has a policy review committee. We've been through update 115. You've had it for about a month as well. Our, the policy reviews recommendation is to adopt it as presented in the packet tonight. And so, really, subject to your questions after Dr. Ryan makes the recommendation.
Thank you, Paula. The recommendations for the board trustees to add, revise, or delete local policies as recommended by the policy review committee and according to the instruction sheet for localized policy manual update 115.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Jessie?
Yes, I move that we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation, please.
In a second, please. Doug, thank you very much. Do we have questions? Like Paula says, we've had this for a while. Seeing no, no questions, then move on to a vote. All those in favor? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Paula. Move on to item F, Act on Donation.
Yes, this is a very unique and a very large donation. The district's arts and audiovisual program is receiving a donation of studio equipment from a media company, NRA TV, that'll be placed at the Technology Education Career Center, the TECC. The company's studio is closing and they want to donate the equipment to a local charitable entity. And the school district is certainly willing to accept this. The equipment would assist students with making short films, projects, creating newscasts, and transitioning their daily morning announcements to a digital platform and all professional stu, all in a professional studio environment. It was purchased, the, the equipment was purchased 2016, it's about four years old. Recommendations for the board trustees to accept the donation of news studio equipment for the arts and audio/video program at the TECC with an estimated value of $204,611 from the NRA TV company.
Do you have a motion for the recommendation?
I move accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Becky, in a second. Jorge, thank you very much. Any questions?
I, I do have one. Do we, does, do our, do our AV department know how to use all this equipment? Is there training required?
I don't, I don't know if Dr. Schaber has any more information about that. I know that, that our AV teacher is, and also Rowdy, both of them have been, in previous districts, very familiar with TV production-type programs. And that's what they did before they, they came here. So if they don't know the particular equipment, then certainly they will, they will be able to learn that because that's kind of the business that they were in before, before they got here.
A long list of equipments, which is
Right, right.
A, a lot to know, but I, I know they're experts in it. And how did we, how did we make the connection with this company?
My understanding is there is a person in the community who knew that they were transitioning and were in a, in a position to be able to help, give them some ideas about where to donate and, and influence that decision for us.
It's unfortunate for them, but very fortunate for us.
Correct, correct.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then all those in favor of the donation? Motion carries 7-0. Very, very much in favor for us. Thank you to that parent, our community member. Move on to item G, Act on Adoption of Resolution Committing Fund Balance in accordance with Governmental Accounting Standards, Standards Board, GASB Statement 54.
Yes, this is in accordance with GASB 54 regulations. And I'll turn it over to Deanne to explain about the committing of the fund balances according to GASB 54.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. So GASB is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board and they have Policy 54 that establishes classifications for the reporting rules of fund balances for governmental entities. And these classifications just provide additional information to the reader of the financial statements about the fund balance. The classification that we're going to talk about tonight is the committed, committed fund balance. This includes amounts that can be used for specific purpose based on a formal approval of the board. Now, through the years, the board has committed fund balance for specific purposes such as self-insurance, claims, claims and judgments, major maintenance. Back in 2009, we received a large blood control payment. And so at that time, we committed a portion of that fund balance to, for LEAD 2021 initiative as well as future compensation adjustments. So tonight, we're going to recommend to revise some of the commitments that we have already made just with the uncertainty of the next legislative session with the COVID issues and just not, I mean, we, we heard tonight about the state, or the state of the state budget and that uncertainty there, that we just wanted to commit a portion of the fund balance. So the recommendations for the commitments are $500,000 for self-insurance claims and $500,000 for claims and judgments. That is not a change, that's currently on our financial statement as commitments. We would like to increase the commitment for major maintenance from $500,000 to $4 million. What major maintenance would be is if we had a large capital expenditure and we didn't have the bond proceeds available to pay for that, such as if we have some damage from weather and our buildings were to be damaged, we would have this money kind of set aside formally to pay for that. The Supporting LEAD 2.0 Strategic Plan, currently that commitment is at 2.5 million and we are just recommending that that stay the same. And then the new commitment would be $5 million for future compensation adjustments. And we looked at these commitments basically with the long-term look at getting through the next legislative session, which would be their next biennium from the next legislative session. So that's really kind of our thought process with these recommendations. I do want to note that the board can revise or eliminate any of these commitments through the passing of another resolution. So you're not locked into the commitment by passing this resolution tonight. We can always come back and revise that. With these commitments that are recommended, the assigned and unassigned fund balance will be 45.1 million. This is 34.9% of estimated operating expenditures. And just as a reminder, this, our fund balance policy is 20%. So the 34.9% would fall within that fund balance policy requirement.
Thank you, Deanne. The recommendations for the board trustees to approve the resolution committing fund balances in accordance with GASB 54 regulations as attached.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for this recommendation? Becky?
I move accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Becky, in a second. Doug, thank you very much. Oh, I got Doug, thank you, Louis.
Page to it.
Laid on the button. Do we have any questions? Becky?
Hey, Deanne, first of all, I really appreciate you, especially bringing the attention to the major maintenance issue. We're just a little more than a year out from when the tornadoes hit Dallas ISD and there's another hurricane out in the Gulf and I'm glad we're not another hurricane out in the Gulf and I'm glad we're not Louisiana. So I appreciate you really taking a look at this because, you know, that swath that cut through Dallas, it hit a number of their campuses and we could be in a world of hurt if we had some sort of catastrophic event like that as well. And the future compensation adjustments, that kind of goes without saying. I think that's a strong signal from the board on the commitment to all of our employees, not just the teachers' salaries, but for everyone that makes this district run. So thank you for bringing this to our attention and to Christie's point earlier, I think, you know, we're smart to jump on this now. So thank you for everything that you do keeping us the school lead sound.
Thank you, Becky. Any other questions, comments?
Well, I agree with Becky's comments, you know, that this, we've got to, it protects our fund balance. These are expenses we know we're going to have at some point and I think that's a wise decision.
Thank you, Doug. Any other questions? Seeing none, then all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item H, Appropriate Undesignated 2005 Undesignated Bond Funds to Expand the Scope of Renovations for the Early Childhood Development Center.
Yes, we've been talking to the board about the ECDC and these changes to this scope. And so for the past four years, ECDC has had a waiting list between twenty and sixty children. How can we, and the district personnel, determine that it's possible to reconfigure the existing space of the building while still meeting the childcare rules and expanding enrollment capacity for up to twenty-four additional children? And so if we're able to do this, then we would provide additional revenue for the district while also being able, which is the most important thing, to serve more employees and their families. So the recommendations for the board trustees to appropriate undesignated 2005 bond funds in the amount of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars to expand the scope of renovations for the Early Childhood Development Center that will take place in 2021.
Do I have a motion?
I move accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation.
Thank you, Mandy. And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Becky, thank you. Any questions? Doug?
I just, Deanne, I want to thank you. I know we had a long conversation Friday and some today as well, well about this to make sure that I understood what our return investment, on investments was going to be because I know this is not a big profit center for us, it's a benefit for our employees, but it's not a benefit for all of our employees because they don't all have little kids. So return on investment, just correct me if I'm wrong, we should get full return within three years?
Yes, sir. Based on the additional tuition that we will have from the additional students.
Okay, and there's no additional staff needs? We were able to?
There are no additional staff needs. I talked to Dr. Schauer about that this morning. It, based on the way childcare licensing has their ratios, they will be able to stagger staffing to cover breaks and lunches. So we will be able to add these additional costs without having to add staff. They can just reconfigure some of their schedules and still stay within those ratios.
And it should not diminish the product either.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Good, great questions. I was waiting for the answer to your questions that you had today, so thank you very much for doing that. Any other questions? Jesse?
Yes, Dr. Ryan, you had mentioned that we have about twenty to sixty youngsters on a waiting list, that's correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and this will help address some of that. And it's scheduled to start this coming year, so how soon, what's the timeline in, I might have missed it, but what's the timeline for us to complete the renovations? Would they be ready for the next school year to accommodate some of these additional kids? Are we looking longer than that?
Paula, do you have some details about that?
Was that a question about when this would be accomplished?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The goal here with the approval and appropriation is try to merge this into the already planned 2016 renovations to that facility. It did not include this work, obviously, this is the expanded scope. So it would be to get it done this summer. They would have to vacate to another location, which they do at times on certain summers. They have to license another facility to be able to do that, but that's when they have the lowest enrollment is generally through the summer. So Lee Lewis has looked at this and with this scope, we're looking at about a two to two and a half month project. So it would be kicking off as soon as the school year was completed.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Move on to item I, Approve the 2020-2021 District Multi-Hazard Emergency Operations Plan.
Yes, Ann, you'll leave the district's board trustees is supposed to review and consider the district's multi-hazard emergency operations plan. And we recognize that neither emergency incidents nor their impact upon the district can be forecast, but the unpredictability means that the campus staff and all district members must be prepared to ensure efficient and effective management of any incident. The creation of and continual update of the district campus plans reinforces the district's commitment to provide a safe and orderly learning environment for our students and staff. And we are constantly looking at our safety and security plans and making sure that our campuses are up to date with those. We do have staff here that could answer questions if you need to. Of course, we had an executive session about security prior to this meeting where we were able to talk about security items in detail. But the recommendation is for the board trustees to approve the district's emergency operations plan with the listed updates and additions and authorize the district to continue implementation of the plan.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do I have a motion for the recommendation? Jesse?
Yes, I move that we accept Dr. Ryan's recommendation, please.
In a second. Doug, thank you. Any questions? Nope, seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Alan. Did he want these back? That is, the remainder of our items are information only, so we'll start with item J, House Bill Three, CCMR Goal Progress Monitoring.
Yes, that's the Career and Military Readiness Goal Progress, College and Career and Military Readiness Goal Progress Monitoring. And I believe Mrs. Kovar is going to be pointing us to pick through the CCMR goals. Dr. Schnouts, anything on the way of introduction?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Ryan. So trustees, I would like to acknowledge just the difficulties and the challenges that our students and teachers faced in the spring. But yet, as you can see and as you will hear from Shannon's presentation, they exceeded the bar of expectations. Our students are amazing here in GCSD. Our teachers stepped up to the plate and just knocked it out of the park. And I want to say that it's continued on to the fall this year and just, we're very blessed here in GCSD to have just amazing students, amazing teachers, and just the environment that supports high standards of learning, of expectations. And that starts with you and the vision that you've casted over the years, as you've seen and will see the trends in this presentation. And so the good thing is when you have a direct relationship between participation and performance, you're always one of those things. We've created a lot of opportunities for kiddos over, you know, the past ten, fifteen years here in GCSD and that continues. And so hopefully, we hope you're proud, you should be, and we've done a lot of amazing things for kids. And so Shannon, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
All right, yes. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Oh, yes, delighted as always. Thank you, Dr. Schnouts, trustees, Dr. Ryan. Can you see the screen? Does it show the presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. So as Dr. Schnouts mentioned, this is going to include some information again as progress monitoring towards our House Bill Three goals that you approved in regards to CCMR last month. Some of this would be sort of a baseline data since we've just now approved the plans and the goals to be moving forward, that'll give you a good sense of where we have come from in terms of LEAD 2021 and then where our LEAD 2.0 work can take us next. So as I mentioned, this is related directly, obviously, to our LEAD 2.0 work. We built the foundation with LEAD 2021 and now in terms of LEAD 2.0, we're going to continue to actively identify those barriers and remove them that limit access to an opportunity for learning. And then this is also related to our superintendent's objective number two, which is to continually implement and evaluate plans to increase the overall quality of the district's academic program. And then obviously, our House Bill Three CCMR requirement, that as we have started looking through the years at this data together and also moving forward, the big questions really we're thinking about has to do with what are those barriers that we could identify and remove to move forward, to find opportunities for students who maybe are not participating fully yet in that CCMR program? And then what can we do to promote and support equitable student learning opportunities? So here are some highlights, so please move into advanced placement. You can see that this year, we had one thousand nine hundred and forty-two students attempt at least one AP exam. They took four thousand nine hundred and fifty-one AP exams in thirty-six subjects in 2020. So we started off the school year and we were progressing along. We get to about March and things changed dramatically for our kids and for our teachers and for our testing vendors. Overwhelmingly, students told the college board, we want tests. The college board redid what that test would look like and we still have this level of participation. And then when we talk about performance, you can see the performance was there just as well. Also, you know, we talk about how many high schools we do have, but just you know that we now have more campuses than just our high schools participating in the AP exams. We have seven different campuses now part of our AP exam program. So this year was going to be, this year was going to be a year of both some planned and then some unplanned disruptive changes. And some of the things that we knew were going to be different starting the school year were that the students were going to have to register to take their exams much earlier in the year and pay, commit to pay for their exam much earlier in the school year because college board had had some pilot programs and some research to suggest that students perform better and are more invested when they have to commit sooner. So that was already a change that we knew about. The changes that we didn't know about were that with the students ultimately were going to have to test online in a home and that there wasn't going to be a multiple choice section and that there were going to be make up and retest opportunities. But the nice thing was that the college board did provide some daily review videos by their own advanced placement teachers that were free to all students. So the college board realized, hey, this pandemic may have created a barrier to learning in terms of access that our kids normally would have had to their own teachers. And so they wanted to make sure that they had some kind of way they could address that particular barrier by having those online study sessions that were free. So in terms of advanced placement awards, we talk about these each year. These are our AP Scholar Awards, the highest award there down at the bottom, National AP Scholar. That is the one for students who, over the course of their high school career, have an average score of at least four on all the AP exams they've taken, whether it is eight or eighteen, and they've made a four or higher on eight or more of those exams. And so that's the National AP Scholar. And you can see there where we talk about how many each of our campuses have altogether. You can see there at Heritage, there were thirty-nine and at GHS, there were twenty-three for this past year on National AP Scholar. And then you can see the other categories as far as advanced placement awards with distinction, where students have at least a three point five average on all AP exams taken and scores a three or higher on five or more of those exams. So kind of when you think about just putting that particular award in perspective, that could be a student who made a three or higher, let's say, on all the social studies exams coming up. So as a freshman, maybe they took that AP Q and Geo, then they took AP World as a sophomore, AP Push as a junior, and then economics and government, and then maybe one other AP class, and they made a three on all of those or more to keep that average of three point five. And so you can see that this year, again, despite those plans changes that were new for us this year, and then also all the unplanned disruptive changes that occurred due to the changes with COVID and the pandemic, you can see that the students still performed at a very high level. Now, I wanted to take a moment to point out, as I do each year with the College and Career Military Ready, or when we talk about advanced placement, or we talk about SAT or ACT performance, I want to remind everyone that while we do absolutely celebrate and thank the work of our high school staff, that this really indicates health and strength K-12 in all of our different types of innovative programs and programs that help accelerate students through the curriculum more rapidly so they can get to that more rigorous coursework sooner, or as well as those programs that we have such as Avid that help support students taking that most rigorous course possible for them in their first, as they step out first time into something a little more challenging than what they had done in the past. This here is how many AP exams are scored at criterion or higher since 2011. And you can see that back in 2011, we had about sixteen hundred students and we had twenty-five hundred, well, two thousand five hundred and thirty-nine that scored a three, four, or a five. And then here we are in 2020, even with all the exciting things that students and teachers and families had to face through the spring, that we had one thousand nine hundred and forty-three students participate with at least one AP exam and took the four thousand nine hundred and fifty-three tests and that we had three thousand and thirty-two score at least a three, four, or a five. And so I know sometimes we look at the numbers of ones and twos and we say, well, those, we have, maybe we have more ones and twos than we used to, but to get to a point where you have over three thousand, three fours or fives, you do have to swing that gate wide open in terms of access and supporting the students and to get that level of participation to get to a point where you could have this many three fours or fives. That too, coupled with the fact that, hey, even if you did not make a three, four, or five, what we've seen anecdotally and through the years, we know that students who take that one, at least one AP course and attend that AP exam are better prepared to be successful in their post-secondary outcomes than if they had not tried that more rigorous pathway. And so even still, if you have a student who maybe started as a freshman, hey, in that AP World, AP Geo, got a one, next year as a sophomore, they got a two on a World and so forth, and moved up to the point where they were making fours or fives as a senior, even something like that, maybe they started at ones, that is a huge celebration in terms of helping someone be better prepared for their future. I also kind of want to make a little bit of an estimate here, when you think about it, if we have three thousand and thirty-two scoring three, four, or five, and if each of those tests got a student three hours and each of those three credit hours, where let's just pretend tuition was three hundred dollars per credit hour, that would be a value of two million, seven hundred and twenty-eight, eight hundred dollars, which, when you think about the cost of college, that is a huge value to our families and our students in terms of helping make college more accessible. So again, by offering these opportunities to our kids or ripping down that barrier of cost, hopefully, the money prevented them from pursuing the education that they had hoped and dreamed for or aspired to throughout their career here with us at GCSD. This right here is to show us a little bit about just what it looks like when you turn this up. You can see that here on each of these, they kind of, well, I had made, originally made these little graphs with a donut hole in the center, but Dr. Schnouts thought that looked kind of like a lifesaver or something. So I don't really, these little pie graphs here, these pie graphs, you can see that when you look at the numbers of three, fours, and fives again, that that is predominantly where our students are. They're in that zone of earning the act criterion score that could lead to college credit when they leave us after they graduate. The reason I didn't put Collegiate Academy up there on its own, as its own graph, is that because their focus is rightfully so on dual credit. Their AP participation is much smaller compared to the others and it would have been difficult to preserve student competency outstanding at that point. And so that's also why I put the middle schools there together in an aggregate. But again, you can still see that when you look at the middle schools or the district or I University or Grapevine High School or Collegiate or Colville Heritage, you can see again that our scores are predominantly in that three, four, and five. This next slide talks a little bit about participation and performance and this is where we start getting into that, more of the House Bill Three. And this is where we start getting into that, more of the House Bill 3 board goal progress monitoring for CCMR. Because the idea is that we would need to start looking at the groups of our students, our different demographic groups, and how they have performed to ensure that we don't have some of our groups left behind. And so I did put them together where you can see the score of 2020, the numbers for 2020 above 2019. But in truth, this was such two different, stark, very different years that I think at this point, it's good anecdotal benchmark data in particular. And I think it's something to continue to watch. However, there were some things that I think were very encouraging in terms of changes. So for example, between 2019 and 2020, we did see a large increase in percentage of African-American students who are scoring at criterion, as well as in our American Indian population. And then also in our, when we start looking at some of our other groups. And so I think it's interesting. I think we'll have to watch to see if that pattern were to continue to grow because 2020 may just be an anomaly year moving forward. Or 2020 theoretically could become the model in which college board does a lot more of their exams in the future. But that's going to be something that we'll just have to monitor together throughout the year. The next thing I'd like to talk to you a bit about are, is the, what we refer to as the SAT suite of assessments. As you know, we have a program through the years of using PSAT 8 all the way through SAT with all of our students. And so the original plan, just like last year's plan for this fall, would be to have all of our PSAT 8 and PSAT MSQT tests on that primary date, which would have been last Wednesday in October. And then we would also do our SAT at school for seniors who didn't take it last spring as a junior on that date of October. But then with the changes and requirements as they are, we couldn't have all of those people in the classrooms testing. We just wouldn't have enough space or enough teachers to pull that off in a, following all the regulations in terms of health and safety. So the revised plan, as you know, probably seen that last, about last week, around the 14th, we did have 737 students take the PSAT 8. And so that's all of Aspire 7 plus our eighth graders. We had 422 juniors go ahead and take the PSAT MSQT, as well as 25 seniors take the SAT at school. Then on the 29th this week, we'll have our sophomores. Then in January, we'll see have our freshmen take the PSAT MSQT version. They're going to take the PSAT 9. We found that just historically, we go ahead and choose them up to take the junior level test. And then on March 3rd is when we're going to have the juniors take the SAT at school. Now, when we refer to it as SAT at school, those are the ones where TEA, they say reimburse, but the truth is they put the money to you as the district upfront. And then they look at how many students participate. And then I'm sure there's an opportunity for settling up if you don't quite match what TEA had sent you. This is our PSAT results from last year. You saw those probably January or so of last school year. There's lots that happened since last school year. So I just wanted to make sure that you had it available again. So you can see this is, this is one of the ways that we progress monitor by grade level in terms of overall student performance as they move towards meeting the benchmarks for career and college readiness. ERW, that's that evidence-based reading and writing. And then so where you see it says met both benchmarks, that would be for you to meet the TSI requirement for when you go off to college in terms of taking that college courses without remediation and so forth. Meeting both of those benchmarks is the indicator for that. But it also is an indicator for CCMR for accountability. So we like to use this particular tool to kind of monitor each class as we move through. The other great thing about continuing to do PSAT in 8, 9, 10, and 11, unless some students might think it's a strange thing to do in 11, even if they don't, maybe don't view themselves as a national merit semifinalist contender. The reality is, is that it kind of speaks to partly LEAD 2.0 Goal 4, where we talk about making sure that we have communication that's timely and relevant with our targeted audiences. Because parents and students do need specific, timely, actionable data so they know where they stand. So if they're thinking about going to college, or what sort of college, or what sort of career, the great thing is, is that to continue through that PSAT program, it's vertically scaled. And so they can get a sense of how close I am to those benchmarks that I meet on the SAT as I move through the years. What's mentioned earlier, when we were celebrating all the national merit committed students earlier this evening, here is a sales from 2012 up through 2021, all the recognitions that we've had for national merit committed, as well as national merit semifinalist. And you can see I've included too the selection index, which is the tool that they use to determine the cutoff points for where the minimum score that's allowable for a student to receive that particular designation. As we've talked about in the past, of course, the national, the number of semifinalists in each state is proportional to that state's percentage of the national total of graduating seniors. So basically, in short, there's a set amount for each state. And as we've talked about in the past, that does vary from state to state in terms of the selection index. And so you will often see that in Texas, our selection index is more competitive. There's more students, more densely populated, high cheating students. And so our selection index is sometimes a good bit higher than some other places. And so when we were looking at last year's tests, it's interesting that they did go ahead and move the selection index down two points. But I don't want anyone to come away thinking that that was an easier round. Because when we looked at that particular test, if it had stayed at a selection index of 221, the students would have had to have nearly a flawless test on all sections to actually qualify. Let's see. So this next piece here, this is when we did the SAT at school day. So back last October, we did have students, 400 or so students, take the SAT at school. It was a little over, maybe about 150 or so or more, who had never taken the SAT previously. And so they were able to take the SAT at school. When we looked at just that group of seniors who tested on that day, you can see that they did have an average total score higher than the state and nation. And about half of them were scoring in that TSI college-ready zone already. That's the year to March, right before spring break. And this is when we tested 910 of our juniors. So I think we're very fortunate that we were able to get that accomplished because, as you know, there were so many cancellations with SAT and ACT as we moved through the spring and summer, and even into the fall. But at least we know that 900 of our now seniors have had the opportunity to take the SAT. And again, should their average score was higher than the state and nation. And about half of them at that point were meeting that TSI college-ready for both math and evidence-based reading and writing. This next slide is going to show us the progression of the class of 2020, the class that just graduated. You can see that this is one of our early groups where we started with PSAT all the way through. And so you can see when they were in eighth grade, about 997 of them all tested on the PSAT 8. And about 55% of them met both benchmarks in terms of being on track for career, for college-ready. Then we switched them over to the more rigorous test. So it's not shocking that we'd have a small dip, let's say, in being on that college-ready benchmark. But by the time they were seniors here, using the class of 2020 seniors who took the SAT, there's 864 of them with an average score of 1138, definitely over the state and national average, and 62% were meeting both benchmarks. The part of House Bill 3 progress monitoring is where we would then go and compare by our demographic groups that are included in our Domain 3 for accountability. And you can see that in our assurance of our students who took the SAT who are in the different demographic groups, you can see some changes there. Where African-American, the average total score increased. Asian, the average total score increased. We saw also too, an increase in the students who choose to not respond, or also students who are two or more. And this data right here is based on what's reported to the college board by the student. As we get data back and the college board and TEA do some student matching, those numbers might look a little bit different. But we can see though, that we do have places where we really worked hard to make sure last spring that all 900 or so were able to take that test as juniors. So this best data coming forward, it'll be interesting to see what does happen in terms of our students and the average total score of SAT as students have been exposed to that style test ever since eighth grade. So now we're going to talk a little about ACT. ACT, I liked their little message, so I left it there for you. It's basically says COVID-19 disrupted your life. We're here to help you navigate that path forward. And so they do have a lot of information on their site that I encourage students and parents to take a look at if you are needing an ACT score. This one does tend to be, just by its nature and structure, much more dependent upon how far you have progressed in the curriculum. So typically, if, you know, I'm a senior and I'm an English 4, I've had more exposure to literature or to writing and to that sort of thing. Same thing with mathematics. If I'm in BC Calculus or beyond, I've had more mathematics than maybe somebody who's taking it early in the, maybe the fall of their junior year, and maybe they're still in pre-cal, or they're still in algebra 2. It's more difficult for them to do well because of this relates more directly to the content. Okay, go backwards. This one right here, ACT was set to do a lot of exciting changes this year. The only one that they're going to do this year is when they start super scoring across the sections. So what they'll do is, in the past, maybe you had a composite score with a set number, let's say 30, and then you had your different section scores, and it would be reported as a group. Now they're going to start super scoring across the test. So for example, if you took the test two or three times, and one time your math score was better than the other times, and one time your science score was better than the other times, they're going to reach across those administrations to come up with your best possible score. And they're going to start that in October. But some of the other things that they started planning for, that they were hoping to do, like being able to retest just the section you need. So let's say everything else was terrific, but you were exhausted, and so you didn't do very well on one section. They want you to be able to retest just the part you need. And some remote testing, they're not going to be able to do that right away. But those are things that they're still working on, bringing to students to help try and maybe tear down some of those barriers that prevent students from having access to college in the past. This frequency chart next to it, you can see the bulk of our scores. Like last year for the class of 2020, or this is all the scores, I'm sorry, all the scores for people who tested between 19, 2019, and 2020. So there's 513 tests, 427 students. And you can see the composite score down there on the bottom is the 36. But the bulk of our scores are above 20 and higher. And that is still above where the state and the nation tend to sit on that composite overall score. The next thing I'd like to show you is how the classes of, or how the testing has kind of been in terms of our participation and performance in ACT. So this chart just kind of summarizes all the tests that have happened in which month. You can see that April historically has been a big month. So like in 2018, 217 students had taken the ACT. And they did really well with a composite of 25. But that April administration was canceled in 2019, 2020, this school year because of COVID. And so those are students who were still looking to maybe get that ACT taken if they still needed to take it. You can see in September, though, that we did have 49 students, still considerably less than the previous two Septembers in terms of taking SAT. That's why I'm so grateful that we were able to get, our campuses were able to get that March 3rd, prior to spring break SAT done. Because even as a lot of schools are moving to more of a score optional kind of situation, there might still be a scholarship or something to do with their athletics where they need that test score. And so at least they'll have taken the SAT and they have something there. I do want to point out, though, that of the seniors who took the ACT between September 2019 and September 2020, so seniors now, 136, or seniors who graduated, 136 of 137 who took the test, the ACT did actually meet that TSI college-ready requirement. And so that's a composite score of 23 and/or higher, and then a 19 or higher on math and reading. And so that was nearly, pretty much almost all of them who were able to meet both of those benchmarks. This next one is a lot of info, but you can kind of see for the couple of classes prior to 2020, the level of participation and performance in ACT. And that we do contain to exceed state and national scores as a district. For the class of 2020, there's 482, so about 40 to 50 or so less students than normally would have taken your ACT. And you can see that the composite score has stayed over 24 for several years now. That's that overall average composite score. But if we're doing our House Bill 3 progress monitoring, then it is important to then take a look at the scores by demographic group to see how we're doing in terms of reaching our students. And you can see that between the class of 2019 and the class of 2020, that we did have an increase in a variety of our groups, or staying pretty close to the same. So those increases would have been in the group of students who do not respond about ethnic race, ethnicity questions. The Asian student group, as well as students who are African-Americans. You can see that in the class of 2020, the average composite score increased over the class of 2019. And so that is kind of a summary of overall of those college and entrance readiness exams in terms of getting ready for heading out into their post-secondary plans and then in terms of their preparation. And so again, I just want to congratulate the system as far as K-12 in terms of getting them ready. And also our high schools and our counselors and all the testing coordinators who were able to get everything coordinated for the students to be able to take such a high volume of exams. I also want to point out that all courses, all the years, that, you know, this year, college board exams, AP exams ended up being online. Typically, that does occur about the same time they're doing Star EOC. And so we typically have a very, very busy May. And we want to thank all those campus testing coordinators to get everything ready for the students so they can have that optimum experience, so they could do their very, very best.
Thank you. Thank you, Shannon.
Yeah.
I ask you, if a junior misses, missed out on that October 14th date, can they not jump in on sophomore, the 29th, or in the January, I think it was the January exam? So if they miss the 14th, are they just out of luck, or can they jump on one of those other dates?
So they, students get, let me see if I can turn off my screen here so I can see you guys. All right. Can you see me now?
I can't see it after your name.
Oh, well, I, all right, here we go. Oh, here we go, one more button.
There you are.
Hi, yeah. Okay, so hi. So our students who, let's say you were, TEA, what they're going to reimburse is an SAT taken, or an ACT taken in the spring of junior year, or any time during that senior year. So what we would most likely do is if they missed that junior test, you know, the opportunity to test within the juniors last spring, that they could have tested on PSAT October Day. But then we could also scoop them back up in March on the, on the day where we're going to do again, right before spring break, where we're going to do all the juniors. If there was somebody, though, who desperately needed to get that test completed before then, then what I would say to them is to reach out to their campus testing coordinator who can talk to, if it's college board related, then the campus testing coordinator has to talk to college board and see if there isn't something maybe that we can do to help that person out. We know it's kind of been a bit of a challenge. I would say too, that if they hadn't had a chance to take either the SAT or ACT,
This is what I'm saying. I'm talking about the, I'm talking about the PSAT.
Oh, the PSAT.
Right, the one they just took, October, the one they just took on October 14th.
So if it was a junior, and they could take it with this, on the 29th, yes. If we were waiting a little bit longer for our juniors, if they were to test the end with that January group, then they're coming up on their SAT. So they may not get the results back in enough time for them to really make a big change. So that would just be case by case, yeah. So that would just be case by case, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions for Shannon? Becky?
Yeah, so actually on that same subject, um uh and let me make sure I understand what you're saying. So if we had a junior who missed the P S A T on October fourteenth, and could in theory take either either the October, I mean, the October twenty ninth, I mean, that's like after tomorrow, um or the um, they could take the January twenty sixth P S A T? Is that what you're saying?
We we set it up specifically to try to, so for example, definitely if it's if it was a COVID regulation that we had to require someone to stay home, then we're going to obviously work it out for them. I think if you have a junior who missed it um on the fourteenth, the primary date, isn't going to be able to do it this time around, and then they're interested in the January date, to have a conversation with their campus and just kind of see um if that's a good thing to do or not in terms of um here in March, uh right before you go on spring break, you're going to get your, be able to take your SAT. You wouldn't have your P S A T results back in time to really inform any preparation. And so um they would just have to weigh the pros and cons and take it case by case. We didn't really build it that way necessarily, um because what we're trying to do is we have to make sure that we have enough room for each grade level, and that's why we destroy it out, because college board recommending testing students at least six feet apart from each other at this time.
Right. So um if if a junior did miss the October fourteenth date though, and they take it, then that circled out of the running for the National Merit Scholarship, is that correct?
They take it on the October twenty ninth, then they should be fine. I'd need to double check on whether or not the January date would still be accessible, but I can look that up and I can get that to you.
Okay, yeah, because the reason that um I'm really interested in this is we had four hundred and twenty two juniors take it on October fourteenth. But the numbers that you're showing for um eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty, and correctly if I'm wrong here, is we had um a little over nine hundred students, uh nine hundred juniors, taking the P the P S A T in those two previous years. So um we had a pretty significant drop in the number of juniors that actually took the P S A T this time around. And so, you know, I I actually, I completely get what you're saying as far as that January twenty sixth testing date, right? The part of the point of taking the P S A T, in addition to the National Merit potentiality, is that they're prepping for a good score on the SAT. And if you don't get your score back in time, then maybe not going to help you. But that's a lot of juniors, I mean, I don't know what our junior class size is combined, but we missed a lot of kids.
We did, and I think the junior classes combined are going to be closer to um about the same size, so probably double, I would say, about where we were more than around nine hundred or so. So it is true that we didn't have as many. I think people had decided to make a choice, because what we did is um to be able to meet the um all the COVID related regulations, um we have um students who were not testing on that day, um did their work remote, you know, because we're doing, we have our asynchronous plans. And so I think you may have had some families who just sat down and weighed the situation and said, okay, um I feel like I'm, I had a pretty good P S A T score last year. I feel like I'm in good shape coming forward. Um, you know, maybe this is a day to to not go up to campus to, and then too, when you look at, when I was looking at numbers of kids who were um what grade levels were predominantly staying out in terms of being remote versus um coming and being in person, um it did seem at the beginning of the year, the first quarter, we had a lot of students in those older grade levels who were already remote. So maybe they opted to not come back up and take the test uh for whatever reason that it was. I do think this is kind of a strange anomaly here. And so as we start moving forward again, to be able to really talk with um our juniors coming forward to next year, to talk about um National Merit committed as a good reason to take your P S A T as a junior, National uh committed and semi final of all that scholarship program, as well as um when we look at it for A P potential in terms of helping them make course selections for their senior year, also to um getting that informed look in terms of their college career readiness before they take the SAT either free with us or start putting out money to take the SAT for real in the spring of their junior year. And then also too, if you take that P S A T, there's value in that it can connect directly to Khan Academy, which is free for them. And if it has a recent score, it's going to be able to customize their preparation for the SAT based on their P S A T performance. So there is a lot of value in it. I just think with this being the COVID pandemic year in terms of, hey, I'm already remote, do I want to come back up to school or not? I think a lot of those factors played in and people made a decision uh based on their own um family situation and current set of needs.
Okay, well, thankfully, at least we had that pretty large number of eighth graders take the test, so that's helpful. And I did forget, of course, yeah, our this year's juniors had the advantage that we gave them the P S A T last year. So you're correct, they actually already did have a benchmark that maybe, you know, other students in other school districts didn't get that opportunity. Um, I think it's important to, you know, there's fine print on the P S A T uh National Merit portion of it in that you have to take the SAT by December thirty first of your senior year, which means that our juniors, the class of twenty two, they really do need to jump on the opportunity in March to take the SAT, because then they are cleared, they don't have to worry about trying to schedule a test someplace else to still stay in the running for National Merit, whatever that may look like. So I hope we can do as much outreach and communication as possible to our our kids and our parents to let them know why this is so important. And we're doing it at school. They don't have to take off work, they don't have to to take an extra day of, you know, it's it's just a tremendous advantage that they do this. And I know we had a lot of success in that last year, but um it was a little disconcerting to see we had that, I mean, a half at least um dropped in the P S A T. I have another question unless Lisa can ask. It's not related to P S A T though. It's it's an A P question.
An A P question?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so Shannon, on the um, looking at the uh middle school uh A P tests, so we have three campuses test, which is awesome. Um, I think one of the big advantages to this is parents are choosing to sign their kids up. So we know that the uh at least some portion of the G M S kids are students that were in the dual language program and then, you know, because of this amazing program, they're ready for the Spanish A P test by eighth grade. So who are the rest of these kids and what are they taking? And are are these families just signing up to take the test? Because they're not enrolled in an A P class other than the Spanish class, is that right? At the middle school level?
Uh, well, potentially, because of math telescoping, we do have some students who could have moved fairly far. Um, we, you know, in terms of moving far. But what I can do is how about if I were to um, the numbers that might become a, what do, if it's all right with you in a board update, how could, would I, could I write to you and show you by campus and then which test the students performed in? And then I could even um take a look and see um if they were enrolled in the corresponding course.
Right, yeah. I mean, it doesn't really have to be broken out necessarily by campus. I was just curious, you know, what, but since we don't offer, you know, a lot of middle school A P classes, I was curious what um what they were taking and if they if they were enrolled in a class, it would be interesting. But it would also be helpful to know if parents are choosing to have their kids go ahead and take, you know, these A P tests because they're already ready to handle that level of material. So, okay, all right, yep, that's all ahead.
Okay.
Thank you, Becky. Do any other questions? Thank you, Shannon.
All right, thank you. You guys have a-
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Shannon. You're the best.
Sarah?
She loves her numbers. Thank you. Move on to item K, review owner contingency expenditures.
Yes, we just have a few uh additional owner contingency expenditures for this month, and we'll be glad to answer any questions.
You have any questions? Move on to item L, update on the twenty sixteen bond program.
Uh, yes, I see Gary approaching, and so we'll quickly turn it over to Gary Radamaker from Huckabee.
Okay, everybody see the screen? Uh, good evening, trustees, Dr. Ryan. It's uh my pleasure to be back with you again this evening um to bring you this month's uh bond update. Um, I'll click through the um through the slides. Nope, it's a little larger up there. I'm going to read it off the screen here. Uh, but we're going to start with the elementary campuses uh related to the twenty twenty stuff. We're coming to the end here, so we'll give you a sort of a brief update and some photographs here. But at Bear Creek, the punchless items are now being corrected, and there's just a few hardware items remaining, so we're down to the end here. Um, the lighting system controls will be complete this week. The open uh ceiling grid above the tech hub in the learning commons areas uh will arrive and be installed this week. The uh control vestibule and uh security kiosks, those are now operational. Um, access control systems are complete, and the card readers are now installed, so that's good news there. Uh, two-way speaker systems, cameras, we're affectionately known as the two N uh system devices are now installed. Um, and the H V A C controls uh related to the test and balance reports have now been addressed and resolved. So coming to the end, I'll see, just here's some completed uh photographs, uh the security kiosks there on the left, and then some completed pictures or a picture on the right with the L E D lighting systems in, installed in the speakers in the ceilings, et cetera. So looking really, really good. A few more shots there of the finished uh finished areas there in different locations. And a couple more. I had a few of these last month, but they weren't quite complete, but you can see the finished ceiling work and paint and floor finishes, and now the equipment and furnishings are now installed. So really looking good there. At Bransford Elementary School, again, you're going to see some similarities here, the installation of the ACE, uh we had an H V A C unit over the gymnasium, that's now complete. Uh, the remaining light switch for the bulkhead lights, there's some, there's some low ceiling areas over the learning commons areas, uh that's added this week. Uh, again, the lighting controls uh will be complete this week. Uh, again, the open grid ceilings at the tech hub, uh those will arrive and starting to install again this week. Uh, the two N devices also this week, security kiosks are now complete, and the additional, we had some additional devices called request to exit devices uh for the access control hardware, uh those are being installed this week as well. So you can start to see really down to the, down to the last few items, um and you can see the finished products here. With the tech hub on the left, um or the genius bar, but you see the uh devices in the ceiling, speakers, lights, uh finished flooring and and furniture installs there.
Gary, as I've uh as I've gone across the district and looked at the new spaces, uh this this slide and the next one show uh the new lighting, and almost everybody is com- uh commenting positively about the lighting. Not only do they look attractive, but the lighting is just a different level of lighting, and it's it's really nice.
Thank you, thank you. It's um, it is in response to where you're going as a district in terms of L E D and N O Z, uh you know, the uh standards in the district as well. So it makes it pretty easy just to to go with some higher quality and energy efficient design features, so thank you. At Heritage Elementary School, again, the list looks very much the same uh as Bransford, uh finishing up quite a few uh quite a few punchless items and last minute things, and the security kiosks are complete as well. And so a lot of your safety and security measures are now in place and and operational, so re- really good news there. Um, again, some of the, some of the finished pictures here at the control vestibule with your security kiosks on the left, and then a finished product there on the right. I think Paula pointed out last, last month, the picture on the right there, just creating some little reading, but then those learning commons areas have been really, really popular, so uh you'll see those really throughout. And then some more uh furniture installs and uh ceiling devices and uh security devices are now installed, so. Furniture really looks good in these in these areas, and that really, really looks good. At Collegal Elementary School, again, uh lighting systems control complete, uh the grid over the tech hub, that's that's going to be uh installed at the end of the month. Uh, if you remember that area, uh the learning commons area, there's some high windows and that curved piece, and so those will have motorized shades, those will be installed, or those have been installed. And then the low windows with the manual operated shades uh will be installed this week. Uh, they're finalizing some of the hardware corrections within the administration area this week, so that'll be completed. And then again, your security devices with respect to the kiosk and those two-way um speaker and camera systems are are now installed, so. Security kiosks there on the left, and then two shots there in the in the learning commons with the high and low windows, you can see those there, so. Finishes turned out really, really nice there, brightened that area up quite a bit. And some of the finished uh office areas, classrooms and furnishings that have gone in there too.
Hey, Gary, I don't mean to interrupt, but at some point, if we could get like a before and after of some of these, I I think it, you won't even recognize them.
You bet. We, yep, that'd be great. We've got plenty of those, so it is pretty, it's an eye opener sometimes just to, just to think, especially here at, I think, that's our brand new school, but it's it's several years old, so it really does wonders for it. At Collegal Heritage High School, the uh permanent doors at that main entry, um and the entry points that comes is going to be arriving and installed by the end of the week. So that'll be uh, that'll uh enable them to finish that uh two-way speaker, two N devices and access control uh and button all that up, and that'll be tied in once the permanent doors arrive. So um all the auditorium upgrades, which are the lighting and the audio um devices there are now complete. Uh, the the kiosk power and data are roughed in, and they're waiting the installation of the uh those stand mounted kiosks. Uh, the new P A system and the head-in equipment in that room has been completed. Uh, Lee Lewis is now working uh through through some volume control adjustments throughout the school, but that's ongoing. Uh, and then once that's complete, the demo of the old system will come out, so that's ongoing. Um, outside, the baseball fence uh will begin installation first week of November, um including the repainting and rehanging of the banners. Um, the fire alarm, uh shot drawings have been approved through the city and the fire marshal, and then that work will continue through the, through August of twenty twenty one. And there's that, the main entrance with the new control vestibule uh there on the left, and then on the right, that's the inside as you walk in that that main entrance there. Some finished uh shots here, and weren't quite finished last month, so you can see here the lighting and painting, uh the floor finishes, and then the monitors and some other furnishings that that have been installed over the, over the past month. Really looking good. Uh, that commons area looks fantastic. Again, a little more of the furniture installation over the past month, and then really just final cleaning and getting those places really, really looking good. The uh swim center uh here at the end where test and balance reports are now being reviewed, the fire alarm is complete, uh the chemicals, water temperature stabilization is happening, and that that whole pool system is now in use. And then the new sound system and the installation and testing is now complete. So really, if you haven't had a chance to look at that, go in there, it's- you haven't had a chance to look, that go in there, it's a, it's really taken on a, a nice new look. So just a couple of shots here, the starting blocks and the timing system that's installed.
It's interesting, because I actually had a parent comment to me about the lighting in this facility, and just how much different it is.
Yeah, the, the pool lighting, well, lighting for these kinds of sports facilities has changed dramatically over the past 10 years really, and so it's, it makes a huge difference really for the swimmers too, so. You can see kind of the, a couple of the finished shots there. Really a great space. Finishing up here at the administration renovation, boardroom, there were some things that I probably didn't notice over the past month or two, but the plastic laminate counters and desks and all that stuff has now been touched up and, and corrected and complete. All of the surrounding materials and construction debris and stuff like that has been moved off-site now. The mag locks are yet to be installed on the glass doors here in this passing hallway behind us, and the punchless corrections are ongoing, so there's just a few more items, really hardly noticeable, but things that they've got to finish, and we're, we're watching that now, so. And as you come in, these are the devices that you see, and then the one on the right is at the exterior, so card readers, card access are now installed. Have a heck of a time with plants, finally getting some to take, take shape, but that, that courtyard's looking nice and the furniture's now there, so. All good. And then we'll finish up with the Cross Timbers Creek study, just wanted to update you on, on where we are. Poteco Coke is our civil engineer, here finalizing the design now. Engineering review by the city is expected to take about six weeks. Will be packaged, this work will be packaged with the 2021 work for bidding in Lee Lewis' scope, and construction to start in either May or June, not quite sure just yet, I would kind of, kind of meet some of the reins and stuff like that, so we're still working on that with Lee Lewis. At Bear Creek, the drainage channel, we've talked about last month and the month before, we're currently in the design phase with our civil engineer, and they're finalizing that first week of November. We'll then go to Lee Lewis for pricing, and then the opinion of probable cost, the OPC, really the estimate for the project to be submitted for appropriation of funds. And so this has really been sort of a hot issue with the city, to make sure that that drainage area and that channel gets addressed, and we are, we are actively addressing that, so that's good news. Lee Lewis having to package this work with the 2021 work for the final bidding to get some better pricing, and so that's a good thing, and then the construction to start again May or June, with respect to the reins coming, so. And then just a quick update on the 2021 projects, which will finalize or finish out the, the 2016 bond, the transportation facilities and warehouse departments, we've had departmental meetings and had one on the 19th. The ECDC department meeting was held today. The reviews are upcoming for the PDEC warehouse and administration, and then the projects are in design phase, and we're about 75% through with our construction documents, the bidding documents. So we're getting close to having documents ready for bidding, and then the drawings go out for bid January the 18th. So that's really sort of just updated schedule for the 2021 projects, and I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Gary. Any questions? I can't see. Nope. There we go, now I can see them. Thank you, Kyle. Any questions for Gary or anybody? Thank you, sir. Thank you for staying late tonight. This is a late night for you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for all the updates.
Thanks for having me.
We'll move on to item M, 2020, 2021 board planning calendar for review.
Yes, we only had one item to change, everything else is the same.
Any questions? Move on to item N, request for reports to the board, do we have any? Consent agenda, anything to pull, or do I have a motion to approve? Jesse?
Yes, I'd like to move that we approve items A through N on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Jesse. Do I have a second? Doug, thank you very much. Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda? Motion carries seven zero. Move on to announcements. Anyone have anything?
Of course, we have the election next week, but I also want to call the board's attention to the floral design department and the work that they've, that they've done here, and the students that are in that program are learning quite a bit. And, you know, every year that they just keep getting better and better, and so, very impressive work.
It's very pretty. Notice it when we walked in the room, made the room look very nice.
Yes.
That's a nice treat. Any, anything else? Anything going on? Jesse will see you for your last meeting next month. Yes?
All right, yes.
Seeing none, need a motion to adjourn. Jesse?
Don't move.
And a second. Jorge, thank you very much. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Meeting adjourned at 10:51. Thank you, guys. Don't forget.